Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. If you came for the city council meeting at 6:30 PM, Monday, April 17th, you're in the right place. We will start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Scott. Laurenti.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Modric.
Here.
Roberts. Here. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have invocation by Trish Jurgensen, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Second Timothy I, therefore I exhort first of all that supplication, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men. Dear God, on behalf of all the people present in this room this evening, we thank you for all who are gathered here today for your many abundant blessings during the spring season. We ask for the measure of health over all to fulfill callings and that you be involved in useful work as these city council members uphold their responsibilities with greatest integrity. We ask for obedience to promote peace and order and justice and pray for Mayor Allender for his disassembled council and various levels of city officials. We are asking that you would graciously grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people, a thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, peaceful, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and would benefit those who live and work in Rapid City and around our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible)
Now, we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda by Steve Laurenti and a second by Brad Estes. All in favor of adoptions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, I'm going to go down front and we'll have some awards and recognitions. Can I have Lynn? And bring your band of brothers and sisters up, please. This week is National Volunteer Week, and we have a mayoral proclamation to read to recognize all of the volunteers in our communities. And then we'll have a speech by Lynn Taylor-Rick after this.
Not really.
Okay, here's the proclamation. Whereas every community member can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and in South Dakota, 240,933 people volunteer annually, making us fourth in the country for volunteerism. The value of those volunteer hours is $630 million. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations like volunteer centers, and whereas millions of volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force, which is 62.6 million people, who have volunteered 7.8 billion hours, is a great treasure. Now, therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through April 29th, 2017, as National Volunteer Week, and I urge all citizens of all ages to get involved and volunteer in our community. And now, we'll hear from Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, my name is Lynn Taylor-Rick. I'm the Volunteer Connections Coordinator with the Helpline Center here in Rapid City, and I brought along some representatives from CASA and Literacy Council of the Black Hills to just thank you for helping us to recognize the amazing volunteers in the community. Those of us in the nonprofit world know that we could not do, we could not meet our mission, we couldn't do what we do each day without the volunteers who help us from serving on boards to serving a meal to mentoring a child, you name it. So, this community has a very strong volunteer base, and we're very grateful for that, but we're always welcoming to new volunteers. And so, anyone ever, who was ever interested in getting involved and doesn't know where to turn, they can always call 211, and I can connect you to these fine folks or one of many other organizations in our community, making our community stronger. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, I have some spots in front of my eyes. I may not be able to read this whole thing. Can I have Dean Stetson come forward? In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the April 2017 Veteran of the Month recognition to Dean Stetson II. Mr. Stetson enlisted in the United States Air Force on a dare from his godfather and says it was the best thing he could have ever done. Mr. Stetson served in the United States Air Force from 1987 to 1997. He entered the Air Force in the first Gulf War during Operation Desert Storm and was deployed for 10 months. His military career spanned the globe, taking him to 18 different countries and 48 states. He has collected over 250,000 miles of flying time. After being medically retired, he continued his firefighting career with the Department of Defense as a civil servant. He is currently the Assistant Fire Chief of Hazardous Materials, Health and Safety, and the EMS Coordinator and 911 Director for Ellsworth Air Force Base Fire Emergency Services. In Mr. Stetson's current position, he is a cornerstone in the fire department that has an impact on the entire base. He not only holds himself to high standards but inspires those he mentors and trains to work smarter and not harder. He takes time out of his busy day to counsel, guide, and steer the young airmen in a positive direction. One of Mr. Stetson's greatest achievements was receiving the United States Air Force Commander's Excellence Award for obtaining a 100% rating on the entire hazmat Weapons of Mass Destruction Train the Trainer Course. He is the only Department of Defense or military member to ever receive a perfect score. He is also the recipient of the Kuwait Liberation Medal, three Accommodation Medals, two Achievement Medals, two Unit Valor Awards, the Southwest Asia Service Medal, Airmen of the Year for the 20th Bomb Wing, FAA Safety Merit Award, and numerous Good Conduct Medals. Mr. Stetson met his wife Melissa while they were both serving in the Air Force as firefighters. They have two sons, Dean III, who is 13, and McKinsey, who is 10. Mr. Stetson has been serving our country since 1986 with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Stetson. Would you like to say a few words?
I was taking me a minute. It's a real honor for me to be up here. I'm just another guy. I've been doing my job for 30 years. I can retire any day, but I keep going on. It was a great place to start in the military, and I just continued. I never wanted to be a firefighter, and quick, fast, and in a hurry, my paperwork got screwed up in basic training. I was supposed to be a computer system specialist. Basically, I was going to turn into an OSI, FBI, they were going to change my name, all that kind of stuff. Yeah, well, I became a firefighter. Luckily, when I was at basic training, a gentleman that I met, him and I became really good friends, and he was a guaranteed firefighter. So, he took me under his wing, but he's about that tall, and he helped me through basic training to tech school, and I haven't looked back. So, thank you again. I appreciate it. Colonel Phelps, thank you for being here. I appreciate it. And a good mentor of mine, Mr. Rod Steels, Rapid City Fire Chief. So, thank you all. And if I could thank my wife, Melissa. You stand. And I have four generations here.
Nice.
My grandma, Viola, she's 96, and then my mom, Jerry, and then my two pride and joys, Dean and McKinsey.
He left out mom's age. I noticed that.
I am stupid.
Would you guys come up and be in the picture? Thank you, sir. Now, could I have Amber Oldfield come up, please? This is a new award. In partnership with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and the Veterans Administration Black Hills Caregiver Support Office, we're pleased to present our first Hidden Hero of the Month recognition to Amber Oldfield. Mrs. Oldfield grew up in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and moved to Rapid City after her husband's military retirement in order to be near his family. Over the years, Mrs. Oldfield has been by her husband's side to see him through a failed spinal surgery, three subsequent surgeries, and the trials and tribulations brought on by post-traumatic stress disorder. In 2016, Mrs. Oldfield was chosen by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation to serve as South Dakota's Dole Fellow. As such, Mrs. Oldfield assisted in launching the Hidden Heroes Campaign on September 27th, 2016, in Washington, DC. In addition, Mrs. Oldfield had drafted legislation requiring the Department of Defense to counsel separating military members on the availability of veteran caregiver programs to better assist with the hardships military families sometimes endure. Mrs. Oldfield takes great pride in serving her husband, who has given so much in service to our country. She finds great purpose in ensuring that her husband has a high quality of life while providing a secure and happy home for their five children and one nephew. In addition to being a grateful veteran caregiver and Dole Fellow, Mrs. Oldfield is also an independent business owner and a public speaker. Mrs. Oldfield has been humbly serving our country as a military spouse and veteran caregiver with dedication, compassion, and sacrifice, making her an excellent Hidden Hero of the Month. Her advocacy and service to our military and veteran community makes her deserving of this honor, and we'd like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Amber. This award comes about in part because former Senator Elizabeth Dole and her husband, Bob, and all of the medical care that he's needed over the many decades since he served in the military. And she called here to the mayor's office and wanted to speak with me, and so I thought, well, she's got a lot of people to talk to. She, we read the information, it's a good, a good thing to recognize the caregivers back at home who are taking care of our veterans. We always, we find every reason possible and take great pride in thanking our veterans, but the silent caregivers are really the ones that we're drawing attention to today. And while Mrs. Dole wouldn't have, wouldn't have it, she called back and made sure she could talk to me and thanked us for our support of this, and I would say that us getting this program off the ground in Rapid City, really, in the mayor's office, has a lot to do with our mayor's office executive coordinator, Kelsey Sekos, who ducked behind the cover, might have been afraid I was going to say her name. But she's done a lot of work getting this organized from our end, and Amber's done a lot of work with the Dole Foundation getting this together. So, very proud to present this award tonight, and I think this, this is the beginning of something good, where we get to recognize the spouses and family members at home who are taking care of our veterans. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Would you like to say something?
Just something brief.
Okay.
I won't talk long. I just wanted to thank all of our kids who put up with a lot of crazy while we were trying to figure out Jace's retirement and everything that has gone on, but also thank you for taking the time to review the material. I know it's chaotic and you have a lot going on, but Libby Dole doesn't say no or take no from anybody. I just appreciate you working with her and working with us. That's all. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, and we're back. This takes us to general public comment, which is a time for the members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. No action will be taken on these items not on the agenda, except with unanimous consent of the city council. When I call your name and you come up to speak, whether it's now or during the public hearings that we'll have throughout the meeting, you have three minutes. These little lights over here will tell you when you're getting close, and the first person to comment will be Hanny Shaffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm speaking to you on behalf of myself and no other organization, and speaking on items that impact the members of our community and the safety of the public. Currently, the city has spent, out of the CIP, on streets in the city in 2014 and 2016, through 2016, $6 million, $7 million, a little over $8 million in 2016. We, as a community, have spent over $33 million on the north side of town, and, you know, based on criteria that is really unknown to the public, as far as I know, and I take one of the streets that are really, it's called Seager Drive, which we have spent $8.5 million about a year and a half ago, and then $3.7 million this year, for a total of approximately a little over $12 million. Currently, I want to compare that with Sheridan Lake Road. Sheridan Lake Road from Dunsmore to Wildwood has 8,800 cars a day, and then 16,000 cars a day between Catherine Boulevard and Corral Drive, while Seager Drive has 2,465 cars. This is the average daily traffic and the amount of money that was spent in the last five years on those two streets. These are the number of accidents that happened on those two streets. Seager Drive has 31 accidents. Meanwhile, Sheridan Lake Road had 184 accidents. Then I look at the number of injuries that happened within each accident, within each road in the last 10 years. Sheridan Lake Road has 78 people hurt in 59 accidents, while Seager Drive had 14 people hurt in 14 accidents. The number of people hurt per accident is higher on Sheridan Lake Road. That indicates the severity of those accidents. The cost to our community for each accident is near $24,000 dollars per accident with We have spent $12 million on this road, which is partially in the county. Meanwhile, we have dirt roads within our community fronted by people who have been paying taxes for over 50 years. This is Sheridan Lake Road during one cloudy day. This is the traffic at Sheridan Lake Road and Catherine Boulevard. I believe that we have to establish a criteria that is based, number one, on safety of the public and nothing else, and actually, number two should be the safety of the public, and then number two is the comfort or the road conditions, and then traffic volumes, and of course, the infrastructure coordination, and then economic development. And safety should be number one and two and three in my mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, next, we have Rick Bell.
Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, as well as all my fellow citizens. I'm a resident of Rapid City and chairperson of the Black Hills Dakota Rural Action, and I'm a registered professional engineer, having worked for more than 40 years in environmental cleanup for both industrial companies and as a consultant on many projects globally. I want to talk to you briefly tonight about the proposed In situ leachate mining, uranium mining, operation that's been proposed here in the Black Hills. The US EPA recently issued draft permits to a company called Power Tech Azarga for the proposed ISL uranium mining operations in Custer and Fall River Counties. I'm frankly shocked that the EPA would even consider issuing such permits, and frankly, I don't have time this evening to go into all the detailed background on what ISL mining involves, but it's especially bad idea in this area and the geology that's here. Suffice it to say that there's thousands of wells drilled in the ore deposit and then pumping a leachate solution into the aquifer, and once it's dissolved, it's impossible to capture 100% of the uranium and other heavy metals that are loosened. So, it's a pretty much guaranteed that a huge groundwater contamination problem would be created, and to make matters worse, no such ISL operation has ever successfully been cleaned up. If approved, these new EPA permits would allow Power Tech Azarga to perform ISL mining operations for a period of 10 years. The mining would occur in the Enyon Cara aquifer and would include injections of wastewater back into the Minnaluca aquifer, which is connected to the Lower Madison, and here's where it's important for the city, because that's where your drinking water is obtained. These permits are similar to what the company requested in 2013 from the South Dakota Water Management. At that time, the city passed Resolution Number 2013-083, which said, "Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Rapid City that due to the potential risk to the Madison aquifer, the city expresses grave concern about this proposed mining of in situ uranium in the Black Hills." So, why would we risk our precious groundwater resources for a mining operation that's likely to contaminate these aquifers in exchange for a handful of jobs and a large profits made by a foreign corporation? We should keep our water pure and support our local economy and the sustainable growth that is happening here in the Black Hills. Common sense dictates that this type of uranium mining should not be allowed to proceed. In conclusion, I'd like to ask the council for two things. First, I'd like to ask that you consider passing a resolution similar to what was done in 2013, stating that in situ uranium mining poses an unacceptable risk to the city's primary source of drinking water. Second, and for everyone who is concerned about this situation, please attend one of the local EPA hearings on the proposed ISL uranium mining. One hearing is scheduled to be here in Rapid City at the Best Western Ramkota Hotel on May 8th and 9th, from 1:00 to 8:00 PM. Please let them know that you're opposed to approval of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the end of our general public comment. Now, on to non-public hearing items, items four through 45. We'll open public comment on items four through 37, and have a couple of speaker requests for these items, and the first one is Charles Henry on items six through nine. And the first one is Charles Henry on items six through nine.
Part of my platform for my running for council is cleaning up, well, we pay half of 24/7 program, half of the detox program, but there's detox program, the PD is always bringing the same people there over and over again. So, it's not working. But why are we passing alcohol beverage licenses enabling this? It increases abuse of children and women, and also accidents, like Mr. Chaffey was saying on Sheridan Lake Road. They cause injuries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker request is on item 31, Janelle Fink.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, but I'm here this evening with my good friend Sylvia Conrad on behalf of item number 31. My request to you is that you remove it from the consent agenda for discussion later today. Well, I sort of made that work and made the lights go out. Okay? Can you give me a second? Okay, thank you. Correction, I made that work with technical support. And I'll continue. When Sylvia spoke to me about deannexation, it was an intimidating word to me. I've been working in this industry for close to 40 years, and I've never been involved with the deannexation project. And so, I was a little intimidated. But Sylvia was persistent, and she actually had some really good points. And as I spent some more time looking at this, I really believe that there's justification here for you to consider and approve this deannexation. I'm going to go real briefly over a couple items. On the history of this, this is Sylvia's parcel here in the center that's labeled Conrad. It's a 20-acre unplatted parcel. It was involuntarily annexed into the city in 1974. The lot's void of development, and it's been vacant for 43 years. The west 2/3 of the property, from this line here and angled over, is zone flood hazard. The remaining 1/3 of the property on the east is zone general agricultural. Rapid Creek runs through the westerly portion. There's flood hazard area here that's regulated by FEMA. And there's an additional 100-year flood plain that takes up another 15% to 20% of the property that comes in this little hooked area here. Settiville Lane, which provides access to the property, is actually a county-regulated street. It's only 25 feet wide, so there's little opportunity to improve that and extend development. The nearest Rapid City sewer is off of Lombardi Drive, and while technically within 400 feet, it requires that you bore, either bore or siphon or some type of access across the creek. And then, you have to extend almost another 1,000 feet till you actually get out of the flood hazard area. So, technically, she'd have to extend nearly 1,000 feet of sewer just to be able to get to a developable portion of her property. And the nearest Rapid City water main is 950 feet north in Settiville Lane, which is up in this area here where the small arrow is. Now, there's actually precedent for deannexation from the city. In 2014, there were two deannexation applications that were reviewed and approved for properties in the Rapid Valley area. The criteria for approval at that time for both of these items was listed as a lack of municipal infrastructure and sole use of the property for agricultural purposes. Support this deannexation as requested. Sylvia's property fits within that criteria. Following those two approvals, Rapid City developed a different set of criteria to judge deannexation by. There are 14 items. It does not state specifically how many items must be met. Staff indicates that we meet seven of those items. I believe that we meet another four of those items. I'll just go through those real quickly. The city has not expended significant funds to benefit the property by bringing utilities to the property. That's item two. Item four is the subject property is located at least 500 feet from any municipal utility service. While technically, within that 400 feet, we discussed that it would be nearly 1,000 feet before she could bring it to a usable portion of her property. Item number five is the subject property is located at least 500 feet from any municipal maintained transportation facility, which is Settiville Lane, and it's over 750 feet to the north. Item six says the property is located within 500 feet of platted property. While that is technically correct, there is unplatted property bordering 50% of the property on the east and the south. Two parcels to the north are platted, but they were platted in 1973, and they have remained undeveloped since that time. So, while technically platted, they haven't been developed. This parcel here, which would be required to be crossed in order to bring sewer, is a floodway tract, so it's an unusable tract of ground. Okay? Return to that list real quick. The property is located outside of a tax increment financing district. The exclusion of the property creates an irregular boundary, creating difficulty for the city to administer services. They didn't give us this one. That's item number nine. And I would say that that is actually incorrect. The city boundary runs along the south and the west. If it's deannexed, the boundary runs across the north, excuse me, in the west rather than the east. So, it doesn't create any different essentially line or irregularity than exists today. Okay? That takes us to 10. The subject property is located outside of an area where there is tendency for imminent growth. I believe that there is no imminent growth here. This property's been vacant for 43 years with no utilities extended to it, so I don't see that there's any imminent growth in this area. The last four items were given to us by staff as saying that it's outside 500 feet from any project that's identified. The exclusion of the property creates, the exclusion, excuse me, of the subject property creates portions of the remaining corporate limits to be discontiguous. I do not believe that that's correct. Subject property does not include residences is correct, because this is vacant. Subject property is primarily agriculture and character are used for agricultural purposes, which is true. I believe that when you look at this as a whole, this property has not been served by the city for the 43 years that it's been annexed into the city, and there's no meaningful probability that development will occur. And I believe that you should consider Sylvia's request to deannex and allow this property to return to the county. And I would be happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Now, on to consent items, items four through 37. Would the council like to pull any items? Go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 31.
Jason Solomon. Steve Laurenti. Anybody else? Steve Laurenti.
Items five and 27, please.
If there are no other items, we have a motion to approve consent with the exception of five, 27, and 31. Motion by Laurenti, second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go to item number five, which is a request by Doyle Estes and Kathy Johnson for DTH LLC for a resolution approving revision number two, project plan reallocating project costs for tax increment district number 54 for property described as being located north of Mall Drive and west of Haynes Avenue. And we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And I wanted to make a motion right away on this particular item, and then I'd like to maintain the floor. My motion is to reduce the professional services costs to the 15% threshold, which would be reducing the professional services from approximately $642,000 to $400,000. If I can get a second.
Okay. Point of order, this item is just on here to set the hearing for May 1st, 2017. I'm not sure you're going to get a second.
Right. I understood that we were just scheduling up for a hearing, but I also understood that we, when we had legal talk about this particular item quite a while ago, that we had the ability to amend a TIF and its costs at any point during the process. Well, if I'm out of order, if I could, if I could ask the city attorney a question on this, please. Could you weigh in on this? Wade, could you explain here? I understand we're scheduling this for a hearing, but my understanding is that we have the ability to amend this particular application at any point in the process. Is that correct?
I think because it's titled, as I said, for hearing on the agenda, as far as public notice, I would say it's the safest course to wait until it actually comes up for a hearing if you wanted to make some changes.
Thank you. And I'll withdraw my motion at this time.
Okay. Motion is set for hearing from Jerry Wright and second by John Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes with one no, and motion also passes with Brad Estes abstaining. Now, item number 27, which is to acknowledge the February 2017 sales tax report. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I spoke about this at the legal and finance meeting, and I just wanted to bring it up so that the public is aware, once again, that we, another month has gone by, and we are now having, we now are in a situation where we were with negative sales tax growth over the previous year. We're sitting at a negative 2.2%. So, I just wanted to let the public know that we, as a city council, and I know that the mayor's on top of this with his staff, but if it comes to it ultimately, as we move through this budget year, this particular calendar year, that if it becomes necessary for the city to make additional cuts, that will ultimately have to come to council, which I'm hoping we won't have, that we will turn this around and sales tax will be a positive. Our budgets are based on growth, so we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're doing just that, fostering sales tax growth, but that we will do what it takes as a council to make sure that we stay in budget. And if that means cuts, then we need to do so. I yield.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
If I may ask a question of Pauline, please?
Yes.
Pauline, I'm sure that we have a contingency plan. If revenues does not meet our expectations, that we would be prepared to do appropriate cuts. Is that correct?
We can do cuts as well as we can utilize the undesigned cash and/or reserves that are in the general fund.
So, we're not anywhere near a crisis. Thank you.
Not quite.
Motion, this item still doesn't have a motion. And we'll go to Darla Drew.
Okay. I move to acknowledge.
Okay. We have a motion to acknowledge. Can I get a second from Richie Nordstrom? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I wish to retain the floor. I have a question for Pauline as well. So, geez, what's going on here? My phone started talking to me. Excuse me. Pauline, I just wanted to know, you know, when we say 2.2%, what does that mean? What's that in actual dollars? For just last month, or is that total for?
That's the first two months of the year versus the first two months of last year. And we budgeted a 2% increase. And so, the $80,000 would be to be even to last year. So, it would be another $80,000 to $90,000 on top of that would, so about $150,000 short of budget.
Okay. Well, I don't feel that's dire yet, but thank you for keeping a surprise of what that amount is. And so, that, and also Councilman Wright's suggestions about the contingency funds and things like that, as far as being able to pull some of the money to make up for that shortfall. So, thank you. That's it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item 31. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you. Item number 31 is to deny a request by Sylvia Conrad for Resolution Number 2017-008, which is a resolution for deannexation for property generally described as being located in the southwest of the current terminus of Settiville Lane. I make a motion to approve Ms. Conrad's request.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Charity Doyle, second by Lisa Modric. Lisa, you want the floor? Okay.
Thank you.
I've asked.
I can support this. I've looked into this, had a lot of discussion. Anybody that's been out in this area, this is an absolute prime location to have agriculture development with the need of the sod farms that we do. It enhances our expanding development of properties. If you've ever needed sod, you usually have to get on a list. So, we have a demand of sod. It's prime soil. And it is, as was discussed with our own staff, it says, well, we've met seven of the deannexing. And then, there's four more that maybe have been addressed that really make that seven become 11 if you look at the teetering of what the criteria manual is. So, this, without a doubt, in my mind, after 19 years of Mrs. Conrad holding on to this property and then being able to move this into the sod farm of need with a lease in the right place, bringing agriculture in our area, I think it's quite remarkable. And I'm pleased that you had brought this back to us and that we have an opportunity to move forward with your quest. And I support moving forward and not denying it. So, thank you again, and I hope we have a growing sod farm. We need it.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, I'd like to ask Dale Teck a question on this, please, if I may.
Yes.
Dale, from the standpoint of staff, I understand planning and zoning recommended a denial. Can you give us some insight on, if there's something from planning and zoning, or if you have an opinion as well on this particular item? I didn't know if you would have a particular opinion, but I will ask planning and zoning as well.
Yeah. Sarah Hansel from our planning department will address the issue at hand.
Good evening, Sarah Hansel, Long Range Planning. I think the biggest issue that staff was looking at for this has to do with the jurisdictional donut hole in that area. It's the largest one in our community. That area had attempted to be annexed in the past, but that was unsuccessful. So, from the, from staff's perspective, it doesn't make sense to remove something from the city limits that is surrounded by the city limits on all sides. I think, looking at the criteria, those 14 items were come up, and they were meant to be applied, you know, on a case-by-case scenario, depending on what the specifics were in each situation. As Ms. Fink noted, there were two major properties deannexed a few years ago. Those were on the very periphery of the city. They were annexed speculatively in the few years prior to that. So, when we looked at this, we really felt like they were just different situations, and we weren't in support of the deannexation.
So, one question for you on this particular, because Ms. Modric brings up a very good point, because we're dealing with a property that I think they previously attested that, you know, it's been 41 years that there hasn't been any development since it's been annexed. So, does, does planning and zoning see a future for this particular property besides the idea of the donut hole? Was there any discussion on that?
Yes, that's very important. Sod farming is allowed on that property under the current zoning. So, there's nothing that precludes that use if it stays in the city.
Well, that closes that door for me, so. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Ms. Fink, can I approach the podium, please? Maybe we should ask the question, what is the benefit of being deannexed, and what's the cost of being annexed? What is the difference?
Well, aside from the reasons that I gave you, the sod farm that operates further to the east of this is interested in Sylvia's property to utilize it for sod farming. His parcel is entirely in the county, so it's regulated by county zoning, county jurisdictions, county taxes. He's not interested in purchasing the property, or I understand he's not interested in having something that's dual jurisdictional. It complicates his ability to use the property when you have to deal with two different sets of ordinances, two different sets of zoning and regulations, and different tax issues. And the city collects taxes on this property. And, the city collects taxes on this property, as well as drainage base and fees for a property that essentially has been undeveloped and doesn't contribute to drainage issues. Does, hopefully that answers your question.
Back to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, if you could come back up, please, thank you, because that makes me think of another question. What are the differences in the zoning, and is that, is that a legitimate reason? Can you, can you expound on that a bit?
The difference in the zoning between the county and the city?
Right, this particular property, whether it's in the county or the city, is there a big difference in the taxes?
The taxes, doing an assessment of the changes in the taxes, it looks like if it were to be deannexed, there would be $400 to $600 savings per year, based on what we took a look at. Part of the issue is that this property isn't currently assessed with an agricultural use. My understanding is because that's, it's undeveloped. If it were to be developed with an agricultural use, such as the sod farming that suggested that the, the zone, or I'm sorry, the taxation code type could change. I'm, I'm not really familiar with how the assessor's office makes those assessments, but it could potentially change if the sod use were to be carried over to the property that's currently in the city.
So if they, if the, the current zoning you're saying does allow for the sod farm, are you implying that there would still need to be additional change if they use it?
No, under the flood hazard district and general agricultural district zoning, they are able to do the sod farm.
Okay, thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Sarah, if I could keep her up there, please?
Okay.
Do we have anything anywhere that shows what percentage of these 14 criteria really are, you know, once they cross that line, then it's, it's going to go one way or the other?
No, the criteria wasn't set up to have equal weight given per one for 14. There aren't, there's not a weighting system.
Though it's entirely subjective.
That's correct.
So if they meet one criterion, then you could base it on that? Yea or nay?
Theoretically, you could. I mean, I think they'd have to have a really strong argument for that one criteria, but it's, it's left open. It's, the criteria is meant to kind of give guidance on some of the things that should be looked at when making these decisions, but there's not a tipping point of, once you pass so many, then you're automatically, you know, given the right to deannex.
Well, if you could, and if you're not able to, I'm not going to hold it against you, but I am curious about, reading through the reports, there seemed to be quite a lot of emphasis on this dry sewer in place and how they would have to connect, when that is not going to be the focal point. So I'm, I'm curious, not having watched the, the videos of the planning and zoning, is it, was that the main reason that this was denied? That they believe it is developable, and I'm sure with, you know, an endless supply of financial resources, anything is developable.
Right, there are difficulties with developing this particular piece of property. We looked at the use that they're hoping to put on it, the sod farming, with that being a possibility, the way that it's, my understanding, the way it's currently set up, we just couldn't justify it as far as supporting the deannexation. Dale, I don't know if you want to speak more to the sewer issues? I don't.
Just as you said, you know, with an unlimited budget, yeah, you can provide services to any parcel, but we've literally have hundreds, if not thousands, of acres in our corporate limits that meet this very same definition, where they're too far away from services at the moment. But in the future, when land becomes more valuable and more sought after, it'll become more cost-effective to try to get services to those properties.
Okay, and is there any advantage to, so, from a planning perspective, you foresee the entire donut hole being annexed at some point in time. Is it easier for an operation like the sod farm to annex when they have dual, you know, one piece of their properties in the city versus the rest of it in the county, versus having just one? I mean, does it make a difference?
I can't with honesty speak to operations for sod farms. I, I'm not sure what difficulties that would impose if you were in two, two different jurisdictions.
That's fair. Thanks, Sarah.
Yep.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. This, Sarah, this may be just a minor point, but could you remind us about how much stormwater drainage fees it would be losing on this?
About $350 per year.
Thank you. Yield.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to allow the deannexation, and we're back to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I call up Janelle for just a question on some of this, just a little bit here, clear up?
Yes.
Thank you. Janelle, can you come up? Janelle, can you fill in the answers of some of the things that have come up from the dais side and the direction that we're going in? And I know the concentration is on the donut hole, but we, this donut hole is an undevelopable donut hole at the time. Will you fill in a little bit more, because your research is quite good?
Thank you. While this 20 acres is technically within that quote-unquote "donut hole," there is a significant amount of land here that's flood plain, flood hazard, that we don't see developing in an imminent manner. And the amount that it would take to develop, to, to bring the utilities and roads to this property far outweigh the value of the property. And I would like to point out that even if you deannex today, if the development potential changes, this property can be re-annexed at any point, and if it were to be platted or subdivided, annexation would be required. So if it develops beyond the proposed use of the sod farm, you have your bite at the apple again. You have the chance to get the property back. You really lose very little today by allowing the deannexation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add that I see this, the donut hole scenario here, donut holes are delicious, and I think we're filling in with some really good soil, getting some sod out there, putting it out in development. I think it's right, I appreciate that Sylvia waited 19 years to bring something that was an annexation that was not wanted 43 years ago, and I like the ending. The ending of this is that we can have our donut and eat it too, if we go forward with this. Thank you, just feeling a little Monday today. Thank you, Mayor.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is a question for Sarah Hansel or, or not, but do we know the original reason why this was involuntarily annexed into the city?
It was platted into the 20-acre tract along with several other parcels, and even though annexation was required at that time, it was missed, so it was retroactively involuntary annexation after it was platted.
Oh, okay. That's the only question I have for right now. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Janelle, please.
Okay.
So, Janelle, can you clear up something for me on flood plain and flood hazard? Are either of those buildable areas, like, ever?
Well, there's, there's two different layers here that we're talking about. Floodway is really technically not developable in terms of structures. There's also 100-year flood plain, which can be developed under certain circumstances, and then the zoning that's flood hazard really prohibits any type of structural development on the property. So there's, there's two different, there's the FEMA regulation and the zoning regulation.
So what we're looking at here is, is land that probably can't be developed anyway? Is that what you're saying?
The easterly third is really, at present, the only developable area of that 20 acres.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
Okay, we're going to vote now. We have a motion on the floor to allow the deannexation. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that takes us through consent. Now, onto non-consent items, items 38 through 45. We'll open the public comment for items 38 through 45, and we have a couple speaker requests. The first one from AJ, Rachel, and Kayla. Or is it Rochelle? Rochelle.
Hello.
This is on item 38, and could you, when you're speaking, could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, hi, I'm AJ. So, we actually missed the March 20th meeting, so we just had some questions, I guess, and potential concerns on the parks rules and regulations. So, I get, one thing that I know was brought up in the minutes, because I did go through the minutes, was we were concerned about the enforcement, and then, what are the radio-controlled apparatuses? Are those the little remote cars, or are those the e-collars? Does anybody know?
When we get to this item on the agenda, you may get the answer to that.
Okay.
If we have discussion about that.
All right. And then, it said that they were going to go into more detail on the designated areas, and then, under animals, there is a section that you can't go into any sod, into any area with no dogs allowed, but that was not covered under designated areas. So we would like to know, where are the no dogs allowed in the parks? I've never seen those signs. And I run through four parks in one night with two dogs, so that's a concern.
And, I'm Rochelle Jensen, and I go through anywhere from two to three parks when I walk, and I don't see any areas that are designated no dogs allowed. So, we're just curious as to where those are. The other concern we had was dealing with the off-leash areas. One of them is in Breitburn Park, which I believe is by the fish hatchery. If you, if any of you have ever been into that park, it is horrendously overcrowded. You have dogs charging everybody and everything, so we're kind of interested in if you're looking at fencing, since you're along a very busy highway. Also dealing with some of the other parks, like Robinsdale Park, that's like literally next to another busy street. Is, is that going to be fenced off? Are you, with these off-leash areas, are you allowing a 50-pound rottweiler to be able to play with a 5-pound yorkie as you're trying to toss a ball? And, you know, possibly would there be a way that we could have, you know, large dog area, small dog area, just to pro, hopefully prohibit any fighting? Do we have anything else? I think. And also, we are wondering about the leash law. You know, how are you going to enforce that? I, when I walk, I see a lot of people walking. In fact, on my way down here tonight, I saw a couple with a, with a Labrador behind them, and with the no leash, no e-collar. As the dog is walking behind them, you have no idea what your dog is doing back there. You know, whether they're relieving themselves on the sidewalk in the grass, and if you don't know that they're doing that, you're not picking it up. Those of us that walk are getting a little tired of having to step around that on sidewalks, so just curious as to how you're going to enforce that.
And I have one question. I'm Kayla Inman. It says that there's no person shall have permit any other animal, wild or domestic. I see people walking cats. I have a cat. I'd like to walk my cat out on a leash, so would that be a potential for allowing into parks? So.
The other question we had was, how did this come about? This is the first time we've heard about this. Was there instances that weren't, you know, covered in the news? We're just kind of curious as to why now all of a sudden there's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Also on item 38, Chris Dale. Is Chris Dale in the house?
My name's Chris Dale. I come before you as a citizen of the community, as well as a small business owner of the Nosh food truck. I also have a few concerns about some of the proposals contained within the parks regulations and ordinances. After kind of comparing the new proposals with the existing proposals, it's clear to me that there's, you know, what appears to be roughly a doubling of the volume of words being added to regulation. We're looking at grossly expanding, or completely adding brand-new sections to some of the parks regulations. Some of these changes, I consider are probably necessary. Regardless, some of them are also pretty dramatic. I've also noticed, while looking through things, that there's a few errors, and some of the editing is best I can tell. Overall, as a citizen, you know, just like anybody, I want to see a fair set of regulations and ordinances that don't discriminate, but also provide an even playing field for everybody. Looking at the overall changes that are being proposed, there is a few sections to address specifically. One, section 020, user's responsibility. Looking at the new regulations, it appears that that section is being completely removed. While there are a lot of regulations and restrictions about how to conduct oneself within the park system, there is no clear statement of user responsibility, as it appears within the new set of ordinances. I think that's a pretty important thing to include, to actively say and intentionally ask members of the community to act responsibly when they're using our public spaces. Also, the ordinance 040 is actually changing, from what I can see, from prohibiting people from habitually sleeping in the park, to prohibiting them from sleeping in the park at all. It appears to be a complete ban. There, you know, in the last meeting, council meeting, that this matter was discussed, it was, it is in the minutes, actually, that Jeff Beegler, the director, had said the homeless population is not being targeted at all, and everyone is welcome to enjoy the park, and if they want to sleep, they can. However, under the current ordinances, it's written, it appears that people are not allowed to sleep in the park. And then also, the last one, 110, there were no animal-specific ordinances, or are not, as they currently exist. We are excluding all animals from access to the park, except dogs, which I think is incredibly discriminatory. I know members of the board, council have expressed their own desires to bring certain pets of a non-dog nature to the park. I think there's, from my discussions with members of the community, that, you know, there's a lot of people, cats or whatever they may be, that, you know, people want to be able to bring those to the park. To make it illegal to do so, as well as to make it illegal to sleep in the park, I think is doing an injustice, you know, to the citizens of our community. As it pertains specifically to food trucks, and my owning of a food truck in the area, I'm overall supportive of the permitting process. I think it's a good idea to have vendors in the area, especially vendors that are providing food, to have an even set of ordinances and guidelines to operate from, to make sure everybody's operating in a safe and a community-friendly way. My only real concern with the food truck section of the ordinances is its overall vagueness and general ambiguity within the language. There's not really a clear set of definitions, as best I can tell, as a business owner from which to operate. There's a clear set of information that needs to be provided for the permit itself, but as far as the determination of that permit, it's very ambiguous as to if that permit would be approved, and if so, what restrictions may or may not be included in there. I would ask that the council, and also Mr. Beegler, kind of reevaluate that, provide a more clear set of definitions from which food truck operators specifically is a year-round vending operation, unlike many of the other vending operations that might be more kind of come-and-go type of situations. We really rely, especially on Founder's Park, as a main staple for our income and operations. The community has come to find food trucks in Founder's Park as a pretty easy go-to. It's pretty reliable to find, find us there on most days. So that being said, I would just ask that maybe this, some of the language be looked at a little more closely, before some of these things are set into stone in legal law. And then there's also two sections, real quick, that are in the, what appear to be a table of contents in the regulations. 020, that users' responsibility. Also, 060, use of electricity, which are listed in that table of contents, but are not actually regulations contained within the greater body of the language. So I think that editing change needs to be made as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on to item number 41. We have a speaker request from Rod Pettigrew.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to comment on our specific items tonight. I see on tonight's agenda, you have a parking item, and I'd like to share a couple thoughts, if I may, on this item, please. I was born and raised in Rapid City. In my whole life, I've heard about parking in Rapid City. Jerry Wright and Richie Nordstrom are probably the only two people old enough, sitting on the dais, who remember my dad- the dais, who remember my dad's store started Illinois Center in the old Rose Marketeer Building. At that point in time, we had no parking. I wasn't even born then, but I remember growing up, the stories my father told, that there was no parking at that facility. We then moved to Mount Rushmore Road, 715 Mount Rushmore Road, which doesn't even exist anymore. And we doubled our parking, and we had one parking spot in front of our store. And we survived there for about 20 years. And then, we moved to Quincy Street, and we had five parking spaces. And our business continued to grow, so now, of course, we're at East Anamosa, and we have over 50 parking spaces. I'm currently still on the library board. They can't seem to get me off of that thing. And we've had several discussions about parking. Staff seems to think there's a problem, and some of our patrons, when they can't park in front of the library, seem to think that's an issue. Recently, I was part of the Civic Center Resolution Task Force, and our assignment there, by the mayor, was to deal with the Barnett Arena, but occasionally, we got off-topic and also had parking discussions relevant to the Civic Center. So, I feel I do have a little history in Rapid City with parking. And my position, folks, is we don't have a parking problem in the city. We have a walking problem, and people don't want to walk anymore. And I travel the world, go to a lot of different places, and I see where a lot of people do a lot of walking. My oldest daughter went to school at UCLA, went out there often, and whenever we wanted to attend an event out there, we drove from her apartment close to the event. We had to pay $15 for parking, could have been private or public, and we still had to walk 12 or 15 blocks to get to the event. She's a smart kid. She went to Stanford. After that, we went out there many times. And same thing, you had to park, pay 25 bucks, maybe, to park, and you still had to walk a long ways to those events. If you attend any event in a major city, at a sports complex, or a concert hall, you have to pay for parking, and you have to walk. That's just the way it is. If you've ever been to New York City, most people, I won't say most, a lot of people don't even have cars in New York City, because it's so inconvenient to find parking. So, a lot of people use public transportation, and they do a fair amount of walking. I believe one of the positives in having people walk through downtown is as you walk from point A to point B, if you're going to go to dinner, do some shopping, you walk past all those storefronts, and it's basically advertising for those shop owners. We do need to provide parking, yes, for the disabled and for the elderly, but able-bodied people should be able to walk. Last Thursday evening, my wife was at a meeting on the south side of town. She called me up about 8:00. She said, "Let's meet downtown at a local restaurant for dinner." I live on St. Cloud Street. I said, "I'll meet you there," and I started walking. And I walked 20 blocks, so I could have dinner with my wife. By the time I got there, I was hungry, and I was thirsty, and that benefited the restaurant, because I ate more and I drank more. I've heard recently that downtown, if we improve the downtown parking, or increase the downtown parking, that's going to help the shops survive, because they're being challenged by internet shoppers. I got 50 parking spaces at my business, and I'm still challenged by internet shoppers. If you read any of the business reviews, Sears Holdings is probably going to close all their Sears stores this year. Look at how many acres of parking Sears has. They cannot compete with the internet. Kmart's probably going to close all their stores. I drive by that store every morning on my way to work. There's got to be four acres of empty spots there, so providing additional parking downtown is not going to help these stores compete with the internet. Lastly, if you choose to hire a consultant, they're going to tell you there's a parking problem, because that's what you're going to ask them to do. Show us our parking problem. So, for them to get paid and do their job, they're going to come back with a report and say, "Yeah, there's a parking problem." And then, they're going to probably put together some preliminary costs of what it's going to cost to fix this so-called parking problem. I hear often, Jerry Wright has said it many times, that we have issues with the infrastructure. There's not enough money to pay for infrastructure. Streets in this town are, you know, need repair. We need sidewalks. Being on the Civic Center Task Force, we're going to have to spend millions of dollars to either repair that or replace it. And now, we're going to hire a consulting firm that's going to tell us, we've got to spend more money so people can park. And I would just ask the council, before they would make a decision on hiring a firm, make sure you have the money. Why hire a firm? Take their suggestions, and then you don't have the money to move forward with it. And as we heard tonight, sales tax revenue is down a little over 2%. Just make sure you have the money before you even hire the firm, so we can implement what they will probably come back with. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to item number 44 in the public hearing, and we have speaker requests from Rex Haig. Or Kent Haig.
I'm Kent Haig. I'm a manager member of Haig Brothers LLC, which is the owner of the parcel subject to item 44. Specifically, what we're asking for is that the city council take, grant a variance for the installation of curb and gutter, water and sewer, and the street lighting conduit on about a 700-foot stretch of Samus Trail. I don't know if all of you are familiar with Samus Trail. It's a gravel road. It's been there for 100-plus years. And we acquired it as part of a purchase back in 2007. Samus Trail goes in front of the ranchland, in front of, north of the ranchland, owned by Frank Commerford, who has no interest, nor desire, nor does his family, to develop in the foreseeable future. And then, there's one house at the very end and down the hill a little bit, where Adam Vinatieri's folks live. But those are the, that's the only two inhabitants on that whole area, that whole stretch. We're being asked, as part of our, you know, the Meadows apartment complex, it's going to be an upscale 160-unit apartment complex, and we view it as a real gem to come on the southern corridor. It is a direct result of the TIF number 70, and taking, extending those particular public improvements down to the city's southern end. And just like Mr. Deltek was saying earlier, there are hundreds of thousands of acres that are simply not serviced by, or do not have city services, because sources are not, you know, are simply not unlimited. We do, there is, there is a very severe need for extension of utilities and so forth and so on, and TIFs are one of the best ways to do that, et cetera. But as far as the piece of Samus Trail that we're being asked to fully develop, curb and gutter, first of all, start with that. We're asking that, instead of curb and gutter, first of all, we are agreeing, as a point of compromise, to pave it, because we believe dust mitigation is good. We believe that it'd look nicer next to this property. And the same thing with the sidewalk on the north side of Samus Trail. The installation of curb and gutter, however, is not only expensive, but it is the wrong thing to do there, because it is, grassy vegetated swells are the most effective way for filtration and proper delivery of stormwater runoff. I've learned probably more than I ever thought I would about stormwater runoff recently, but Rapid City's own Stormwater Quality Manual contemplates grass swells to be located and to collect overland flows from areas such as parking lots, buildings, residential roadways, et cetera. It's provided for and recommended in our studies. And to put in a section of curb and gutter that will only fail over time, or if nothing else, look like, start to look like a segmented street after new stuff goes in after it, to me, is not a wise use of dollars. Neither is putting in water and sewer at this time. They'll put it in and cap it on both ends to let it decay. There are no utilities coming off of Samus Trail to the north at all, nor will they be, because Moon Meadows Drive provides all water and sewer and stormwater drainage from the north side of our property. Mayor, looks like I'm out of time. If I may be allowed a few more comments. Thank you.
Can defer part of my time? Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Rex. And the other thing on the stormwater runoff issue, it's a, this is the EPA's recommended and, and the recommended way to handle stormwater runoff off roads is grassy swells, when and where possible. These are already there. They're ditches. They're the best way to convey stormwater and filtrate it. And again, referring back to the Stormwater Quality Manual, it said, "Depending on the magnitude of changes to the land surface, the total runoff volume can increase dramatically." These changes not only increase the total volume of runoff, but are, but also accelerate the rate at which runoff flows across the land. This effect is further exacerbated by drainage systems such as gutters, storm sewers, and line channels, et cetera, and that are designed to quickly carry it away. It's not going to be quickly carried anywhere. Matter of fact, the water sewer, curb and gutter are going to sit there and decrease in quality, simply with age, and get beat up and knocked around and so forth. Again, we like the idea of dust mitigation. We believe that's very good for the environment, so that's why we are certainly agreeing to pave. But the stormwater runoff aspect is, from an ecological standpoint, is irresponsible in this location, where you already have the best way of handling stormwater runoff. Finally, going through the different, those are the most compelling reasons in my mind to not do, not require curb and gutter and water and sewer. When we first, we did not anticipate about the $350,000 to $375,000 of the improvements that, that bringing Samus Trail to full improvements would be. We did not anticipate that at the beginning of the project. Caught a little off-guard, maybe not, maybe we were asleep at the switch. But when we voluntarily annexed and extended the city's southern border, which Samus Trail is, it's the furthest point of our southern border, the Highway 16 corridor, when we did that, we could have easily stopped at the property line just north of it, which is ours, and had that in the county, wouldn't have been an issue, in hindsight. But the bottom line is, it's a very rural, very agricultural setting. And nobody in the, I mean, no services are going to be needed off the south side of that until that develops someday. The north part of the road does not receive any services from it. We also think that, well, want to point out that, again, all services come from Moon Meadows Drive onto our land, onto current, both sides of Moon Meadows, but the drainage itself is not increased along Samus Trail from our development. It, all drainage is designed to go to the north off of the developed property that is currently, or north of Samus Trail. So, not even the drainage is being exacerbated at all by our development next to it. There's literally no reason for it to be developed right now, fully. Someday, if somebody doesn't want to build something on that side of the road, I anticipate we'd have no problem doing, you know, splitting that cost with somebody. But right now, the cost to do, the added cost to do the wrong thing simply strikes me as not common sense. And again, I know it's the primary aspect set forth in the ordinance, but it also is provided that other options exist for stormwater quality. My rest. Thank you.
Rex, you probably have about a minute left.
I was going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, if I had any time left, and I'll certainly not use it if it's not allowed.
Go ahead.
Quickly, I just ask you, when you look at the, what's going to be presented for the engineers and so forth, the first question you got to ask yourself is, why are we doing it all at this time? You'll see in the pictures that you've got the old Samus Dirt Trail at the very south, south end of the city. And there's no, going to be no, there's one residence, or two residents that use that entire road. So, you're going to take a piece out of Samus Trail, it's a dirt road, and on both sides of it, there's going to be dirt. And you're going to have a little piece that's got pavement and a piece of sewer pipe underneath it, out in the middle of a field. Now, at some point in time, we got to say, okay, maybe we can do it at a different, later time. We could be on the record as we prepare a proportionate share of any assessment, but I really want you to just look at it from a common sense standpoint. And do you want a piece of pavement out in the middle of a field that's going nowhere? All the drainage has been done through Moon Meadows. Everything's in, ready to go, ready to be developed. And here, you've got the other side, the very tip, the end of the city, that nobody uses, and you're going to spend resources to do that. The other end of that is, okay, so, it's what the ordinance says, you got to do it. Put your piece of pavement out in the field. We do that, guess what? When that development is approved, at that point, for that parcel, it becomes your road, the city's road. And then, you've got a piece of pavement out in the middle of nowhere that, I don't know any pavement in the world that survives not being broken up and doing all that stuff when it's sitting out there, existing by itself in the middle of a field. It's going to cost the taxpayers more in the end. I would rather do it right, when it's fully developed. We pay our share, entire site will be assessed, fine, that makes sense, both sides of the road will be assessed. It'll be a road that goes somewhere, instead of nowhere right now. So, I just ask you to look at it from that perspective, and hopefully, we can, you know, you do this at the right time.
Okay, thank you. Now, Michael Stetson.
I'm from KTM Design Solutions. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Haig Brothers LLC. And so, I'm here to discuss the appeal of staff decisions for improvements along Samus Trail. I'll just go over a couple of points. Here's a location map. Samus Trail is on the south boundary of Moon Meadows, and it's an existing gravel road, and it provides access to two parcels, residential parcels, or residential houses, and there's no access to Mount Rushmore Road on the west end. And so, the part we're talking about here is south of the Meadows Apartments. And so, all the access and utilities for the Meadows Apartments and future lots to the west, or from Moon Meadows Drive. And so, there'll be no proposed approaches or accesses off of Samus Trail. And so, here's a typical section of the road. We're proposing a 26-foot-wide paved surface, vegetated ditches and sidewalks. And so, we're requesting out to install curb and gutter, water and sewer, and streetlight conduit. There's currently vegetated ditches in Samus Trail now. And there's a couple of water quality benefits for vegetated ditches, and just a couple of points that Kent talked about from the Rapid City Stormwater Quality Manual section. 2.1.1 allows, or says that total runoff increases and development increases, and a lot of times, this is made worse by gutters and storm sewers. And in section 2.3.7, grass swales can also be used instead of curb and gutters. So, some of the water quality benefits are, just reduces downstream runoff and peak flows by allowing more evaporation, by slowing the water down, and also reduces pollutants. And so, USGS did a study a couple of years ago for Rapid City, comparing the Arrowhead Drainage Basin and the Mead Hathorn Drainage Basin, and they analyzed total suspended solids and bacteria and stormwater runoff. So, the Arrowhead Drainage Basin is primarily grass channels. It's located along Sheridan Lake Road, and the Mead Hathorn Drainage Basin is primarily curb and gutter and storm sewer. It's located in Robinsdale neighborhood. So, the Arrowhead Drainage Basin had half the total suspended solids and third of the E. coli and stormwater samples compared to Mead Hathorn. And this is generally due to the grass channels in Arrowhead. That's primarily the reason for it. And so, just kind of a couple of points, again, about the water and sewer in Samus Trail. So, it'd be the section directly below the apartments, about, as Kent said, 700 feet long. They would be, they wouldn't connect to any other mains currently, and they, so they'd be dry mains, and, you know, it'd start some of the deterioration without providing a benefit, such as the water valves and fittings corrode. benefit, such as the water valves and fittings corroding. And so it's not needed for Moon Meadows, and it wouldn't currently serve any existing benefits. So just again, the applicant is asking for 26-foot, is proposing 26-foot wide paved surface, grass ditches and sidewalks along Samus Trail, and they're waving, asking to weigh the requirement for curb and gutter, street conduit, and water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker request on this item, from Casey Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't know if we can get that site map back up, but I live just east of this property. Been there a long time, there's quite a history in that whole area about development. My concern on this item is the drainage.
Can you just go over to the microphone, Casey?
I'll bring it to me. My concern is the drainage out there. I assume, and I guess I'd like to hear, that that grading is going to raise the level on Samus Trail, because there's a low spot right where your development's going to be that always has water in it. And it's a hazard a bit when it snows and it blows, and it becomes a pool right on the road. So I don't know if you have plans to change that, but if you don't, that's going to be a problem. We came and commented when this property development was going to be on the end, it's moved to the west, concerned that there will be effects from piecemeal. Not terribly concerned about what you have them do or not do, but that it'd be done properly. And I don't know if I can project off this, but I've got a picture of the northeast corner where mud flows over the sidewalks that are there. I don't know if you can bring that up in terms of the size? Sorry about that. Oh, okay. So it's a little bit hard to see, but there's the corner of the northwest, northeast side of the property, and you'll see to the left, in this area, they've, they've got a large ditch, but we continue to see mud come across the sidewalk there. And so, again, concerned that the property's developed, so that these things don't happen. This is looking from that corner back, and it's at a very low spot here, and you can see that their berm, where they moved some dirt, is here. And then the property itself is very high here. Again, unless that's going to get smoothed out, you're going to have water running both north and south. So that's a concern of ours. Going back to history, this was the Walmart site, years ago, through that whole situation, a scenic overlay was put on this property, it was about 600 feet deep. Somehow, in the wisdom of whomever was involved, that went away with a comprehensive plan that said, we'll do this with a planned unit development. But we've seen what happens with some planned unit developments, and I'm not, this is totally off the Hague side, planned unit developments somehow have allowed a storage unit across the road, and we've had other things that have been on this historic scenic byway that, to me, don't fit. So I'm just urging you to be careful about any future projects, and have a concern about the drainage, and the dust, and the traffic in that area as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close the public comment on these items, and we'll go to item number 38 under ordinances. Second reading ordinance number 6113, an ordinance to amend park use regulations by amending Chapter 12.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, continue from the March 20th City Council meeting. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got Jeff Beigler up here, Parks Director. Jeff, we heard several concerns tonight. One regarding radio controlled usage, and where that goes, and what types of vehicles those are, as well as the pet issue, and where dogs are, are not allowed. So can you, can you address some of those comments you heard today?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The question regarding the e-collar's being a radio controlled device, they are probably a radio controlled device, but they're not a radio controlled vehicle for purposes of this ordinance, so they are not considered as part of this, of this ordinance amendment. There was a question about where the no dogs allowed signs are, or will be. The only place that there are currently no dogs allowed signs are at several of the soccer fields. Soccer Rapid City put signs on the fence saying no dogs allowed on the fields. That is not enforceable, because we don't have it in ordinance that dogs are not permitted in areas that have a sign. So the areas that we had in mind for no dogs allowed at all would be athletic fields, where we've got a lot of kids playing around, out in the fields, and the children's play areas, which is not an appropriate area for, for dogs. Those are the areas that would be labeled no dogs allowed.
Jeff, real quick, because I can see some inquisitive faces. What you're not saying, because Canyon Lake Park has a playground, dogs can't be there, right?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the actual area where the play equipment sits. A lot of those areas have the rubberized safety surface under them, and really, they, they cannot be an area where dogs are, are running around and doing their business.
Also, we heard, we heard some concerns about perhaps some vagueness in the food truck ordinance, and how, seems like there's, it's overall pretty positive, but, but what are the criteria that we're going to judge that by, and can you address that a little bit?
Yes, the, the section in here that covers food trucks also covers any type of vending, so it's not just a food truck section, it's a section for any kind of concessions or other vending that might arrive in the parks, either now or sometime in the future. Some of the issues that Mr. Dale brought up are issues that will be covered on the permitting process, which will be gathering the information from the prospective vendors, and, and then laying out where those areas for permissible vending would be allowed. And as it is now, there will be a number of parking lots, which will be available for, for the food trucks to locate. The other vending areas are those which are parts of the athletic fields that have concession stands as part of the little league buildings or soccer buildings.
Okay. So since the last reading, you've, you have worked with the radio controlled vehicle community to hammer that out, and you also changed the hours to be, to begin at 5:00 AM year round instead of seasonal.
Correct.
I, I do appreciate you working with those groups, and also extending the hours. Is there anything else that you heard today from the citizens that you wanted to address?
Well, the, the one area that I think needs to be addressed, or the two areas that were omitted in this, that were correctly pointed out by Mr. Dale, the, the one section in here with the user's responsibility, and the other section that dealt with electricity use in the parks. The current ordinance limits the use of electricity to preparation of food, or the use by city employees in the, in the workday, when they're using electricity in the parks. Those two, for some reason, those two areas were omitted, and that needs to be addressed.
And finally, we heard some concern maybe about enforcement of the current ordinances, about perhaps, you know, where dogs go, and all of that. Is there anything that we can do to shore up any enforcements in the parks? Are there, are there any issues that, like that, that you're aware of that are widespread?
Well, there are. The reason why this, this ordinance is being amended is to cover those things that are going on in the parks, that there's no, there's no possibility of enforcement. If there is nothing in there about no dogs allowed, dogs can be anywhere, and they can be in areas where they're not, they're not appropriate. So what this will do will be to allow staff, park staff, police staff, to, to talk to people who are essentially in violation of these regulations, to let them know that there are regulations, and they are, are doing something they shouldn't be doing. It's not necessarily something that's going to be out, and we're not going to go out with a ticket book and start writing people up. This is more of an informational document that's going to, to allow us to regulate the use of the parks and the safety of the parks to everyone who uses them.
Okay. My time is up, and so just stand by for other council members' questions. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Couple of questions for you, Jeff. Number one, you can answer these after I rattle them off to you. Are you prepared to enforce the ordinance? Do you have the staff?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Secondly, when you say dogs are excluded, does not, does not mean to exclude service dogs or handicapped, dogs servicing handicapped people, correct?
No, that, that would not.
Is that part of the ordinance? Is that clearly spelled out?
It's not part of this ordinance, but it's part of our city ordinance, I believe.
You should know. And the other thing is, when you, the comment that was made about sleeping, and I know you said that intentionally we would like to have people enjoy the parks to include sitting under a tree and taking a nap. Your intent is what, to keep people from camping in the park, or what?
Well, essentially, yes. I think there's, I think there's a difference between napping and someone sleeping, you know, in one of the play areas. I think that that's kind of a common sense, and I think that's something that's subjective, and, and it will certainly be dealt with on a case by case basis.
The only other thing is, I know that the question is, why are we doing this? And I know that the radio control route is correct. When I was around, we had horses, we tied up in front of the towns. We didn't have drones, we didn't have a lot of things that we have today. So I know, I appreciate your address here as to, hopefully, handle issues that are potentially going to happen, and you're willing to work with the ordinance to make sure that it's equitably enforced, enforced. And with that, I'll assist the doc. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I just wanted to talk with you a little bit about that area for remote control vehicles, And I just want to make sure that, that, that particular community is satisfied, because obviously, they use the parks often and a lot. So I just want to make, can you summarize how that went? Were those groups there, and what were, what were their main, what were their main concerns, and what was changed because of the, the conversation?
The, the first iteration that you folks saw on the 20th of, of March, listed that radio controlled vehicles would be permitted in designated areas. And that was something that really wasn't defined, and that was my fault for not, for not being more specific on that. After speaking with the model airplane clubs, and with some of the business owners that deal with model, remote control models, we put across our concerns that remote control model use not be a detriment to anyone else who's using the parks now, or not be a danger to persons in the parks, not be a hazard to the property that's in the parks. So with that said, the, the ordinance revisions that you see here are limiting the size and speed and types of remote control vehicles, so that they are more park friendly, I'll say, for other, for lack of other word. The radio controlled airplanes are, there's actually a classification called Park Flyer Classification, which is a, you know, nationally recognized definition. And those are the small, small planes that are maybe styrofoam, or they're less than two pounds, really pretty small, really something that's not going to damage property if it, if it falls into it. And we've also included language in there about not, not operating within 50 feet of anyone else who's in the park.
So my other question on this particular section is, relates to necessity. Do we have documented complaints, documented incidences over the last few years where we've had situations with these remote control vehicles?
No, we do not. But we know that they're being used in the parks, and we know they're being used everywhere. And so this is just an opportunity for us to kind of, kind of define which of those are appropriate, and those areas where they can be used.
Okay. So the regulations themselves, I understand that they need to be somewhat vague, because otherwise, I probably wouldn't have enough memory on this phone to read the regulations.
Right.
If we had to specify every scenario and everything that somebody could do. For example, the sleeping in a exercise area, I always forget which direction we're sitting, it's behind us. The exercise area, obviously, that's a no brainer for most of us, that sleeping in that particular area during the day when there might be kids, families there wanting to, citizens wanting to use that, that if you're laying down in that particular area, that just doesn't make a lot of sense. So I understand some of the vagueness, and I just wanted to let people know that, that the city's not out to get them, that obviously, it's, it's a, it takes a logic test, it takes a common sense test. We all know when something is, generally, something is inappropriate, and like I said, it would be very difficult to identify and, and put every scenario, so that everybody completely understood exactly what they could do, when they needed to do it, and when they couldn't. So I understand that as well. I'm satisfied at this point. I'd hope that maybe there would be some less regulations with more remote control vehicles. However, if the community is satisfied with where we're at, and I understand this is a guideline, this isn't, you know, this isn't bronze, that we can make changes as necessary as we move along. So I appreciate the hard work you've done on this. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand by, Mr. Beigler. First, I'd like to say that the Rapid City Police Department has a tremendous amount of discretion and common sense when it comes to these types of things, and they don't, I mean, they're so reactive with the things that go on in our community, they're not going to be swarming the parks to get violators of, of the park ordinance. So, you know, if someone calls, they'll come. If there's no problem, there's no problem. So, but I did want to ask you about two weeks, since there are some omissions on this, what would you rather see today? Would you rather see a motion that adds those back in, or an actual clean item for us to delay second reading?
Well, that's entirely up to you folks up there, but I would, if, if it's, if it's possible to, to approve this with the addition of those two omitted sections.
Okay, fair enough. To address the cats, I, I personally have never seen anybody walk a cat, but obviously, we've had some people say tonight that they do. And so, did you consider this? Did the Parks and Rec Board consider this element?
Yes, all sorts of animals were talked about, and it was kind of, the consensus was that the dogs are kind of the universally accepted animals that you see out in parks and in public, and with all respect to cats, I own two cats myself, but we felt that it was most appropriate, just to limit it to dogs.
Okay. And then for the group that came, I know you had a lot of questions, and I've been on your end before, it is so awkward to come up to the podium, and you've got cameras on you, and you have questions, and you're at a point where you can't get them answered. So I hope you don't find that rude, it's just our procedure. But I would really like to give you, any of you, the opportunity right now with the three minutes I have left, that if you didn't have a question that was addressed tonight, please approach the podium, ask me right now, and we'll get it handled. And Mr. Beigler will stand by, because he'll probably have the answer.
Okay, I have a question for you, Mr. Beigler.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Kayla, sorry. So I do a lot of therapy dog and surface dog work, and a lot of my therapy dog work is with children, and we like to use, you know, the elementary schools where there's lots of kids. Is that something that you are going to, you know, frown upon and kick us out of?
We don't have jurisdiction over the school district.
Okay.
So I'll have you wrap the questions up here, just for protocol, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. So like the parks where the kids are, where you had mentioned, excuse me, where dogs weren't going to be allowed, would they be allowed, therapy dogs and stuff like that?
May I?
Please.
We would still prefer that they not be in the, the playground areas, however, they could be in the park areas, there's, there's absolutely no problem with that, as long as they're on a leash, or in control of their, of their owner, or their...
And Mr. Beigler, I did see a provision in the, in the current draft, and I know we saw several drafts, so I, I think it's still in this current one, where you can get special permission from you as the director on these unusual circumstances. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes. If there's an event, or if there's a group that wants to, to bring an event with animals other than dogs, a simple phone call and permission from our department would suffice.
Okay. I have a minute thirty, so any other questions you didn't get addressed, rattle them off quick.
I just have, I have two things. As far, I'm AJ. Hi. As far as the playgrounds, so I can run past the playground, like in Canyon Lake, because that is my running path. Okay. And two, I actually have been harassed by those little motorized cars in Canyon Lake Park. Somebody hit the throttle and ran it up a hill towards me and my dog, so I don't love them, so as long as they follow rules and don't harass me, I don't have an issue.
I hope you carry a cellphone with you, and then that would be a very reasonable means of calling dispatch and sending someone over.
My little, my little dog does not like motorized things, so if he wraps a leash around me, down we go. So.
I'm Rochelle Jensen.
In regards to the leash law, there's a lot of people that will not, will refuse not to adhere to the leash law. So they will be, the only place they can go without leashes is in the off-leash parks, which are getting more, I don't use them, because they're getting more and more crowded. How is that going to be regulated?
Mr. Bigler, I have twenty seconds left. Maybe another council member can pick up the rest of it.
Yes, we have the five off-leash areas, and they do get a lot of use. Some of them are really quite popular. And some of them, as one of you mentioned, can be kind of close to roadways and that sort of thing. But those are areas where if people feel comfortable enough with their dogs off-leash, that's where they go. It would be nice to have a fenced-in leash area, or off-leash area. And in fact, there was one that was proposed during this last round of vision fund proposals, which was not funded. But it is something that we would like to do someday. We do not have the funding for it today.
Thank you. I'm done, I'm out of time.
Okay, we're going to go to our city attorney, Wade Nybert.
I just wanted to weigh in on the omitted sections. They're not repealed by this ordinance, so they would stay the same if you passed it as the revised ordinance as it is. They would stay the same, the user responsibility. There's no language in the ordinance to repeal it, so you don't, you don't need to add it in to just leave it the same.
Okay. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure I understood it correctly, I was planning on making a motion that we reintroduce the two omitted sections, but if I understand Wade correctly, we do not have to do that in this motion. So I just want to be abundantly clear on that. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of other things, if Mr. Bigler, if I may. Couple of items on the enforcement side. From what I'm hearing you describe it as, it's more of an educational process, or an informational process, so that we really don't have to call up the cops to bring them in and handcuff them and all of that stuff. It's mostly an education process.
I would certainly hope so, yes. But it does, if voluntary compliance is not had, then there is an ability to have the police respond.
Thank you. The other area of interest for me is the communication side of it. And two different segments are taking place for me in this communication area, meaning that if a citizen sees a, using the dogs as an example, crossing a soccer field, and if it's not allowed in that area, and there is signs posted up there, how does the public citizen respond to that?
Well, they could, they could either approach the owner themselves, or they could give us a call. We do have parking rec personnel that are out and about, and probably in those very parks. They'd be happy to step in and let the folks know that they're not supposed to have their dogs.
And then you do have parks personnel scattered throughout the city, so that they could approach those people as well.
Or they could call our office, certainly.
Yes, thank you. And then the other area of the communication part of it is, when you're doing, I don't want to call it a citation, but a notification to the citizen that may be incurring a violation of these ordinances, can you kind of explain just very briefly how that process works? Do they get a written citation, a verbal? How does that process work?
Well, we don't have the ability to write tickets, our department. That would, that's a law enforcement function. So we would, we would talk to the individual first, and if no resolution could be made, then law enforcement would step in.
Thank you. And for me, again, communications is the biggest issue, so getting that word across to the public is very critical for me. Thank you.
Yep.
Yields. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second by Steve Laurenti.
I'd like to retain the floor for just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just for the people that wanted the small dog park, you know, when the vision funds come up again, if they want to approach that again, I would encourage you to please join their efforts to create the small dog park. I really understand that. And, you know, I really liked Chris Dale's comments tonight. You really looked at the ordinance, you really thought about it, and I think that maybe you should approach the park and maybe work through some of these problems with, that you might see. You know, Jeff Bigler is very open. He'll talk to you, or somebody at the Parks Department, because I really think you're the kind of person, the voice that we need for those food trucks, because you really thought about what you brought here tonight. So thank you for your comments. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of this ordinance, second reading. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
On to item number thirty-nine, under Community Planning and Development. Request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Boom Shakalaka LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots one through twelve of Block One of Diaz subdivision, generally described as being located north of Seeger Drive and Diaz Avenue intersection. Recommendation from committee was to approve with stipulations.
So moved.
Okay, that motion was created by Estes and seconded by Jerry Wright. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number forty, a request by KTM Design Solutions LLC for Stone Ridge LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot One of Stone Ridge subdivision, generally described as being located east of the intersection of Parkview Drive and Fifth Street. Recommendation from committee was to approve with stipulations.
So moved.
That motion was made by Jason Solomon and seconded by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I'll go on to item number forty-one now, and we'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-one, authorize staff to issue request for proposal for downtown parking study strategic plan, and this was sent to council without recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a couple of comments here to start this out. As far as we can find, the last parking study that was paid for may have occurred in the 1990s. We are not, I don't believe we have found it yet, although Jerry Wright says there was one in the 70s also. There was, the Rapid City Police Department was tasked with coming up with a parking plan in 2007. So that plan, if you've seen it, is essentially a collection of opinions from a law enforcement agency, how parking should be managed. And I don't know exactly if any of them were implemented, but it seems like none, or almost none of the recommendations, were implemented. This particular parking study is to gauge our parking capacity in the downtown area as it relates to future development. And the example, as we spoke of in the February special council meeting, is the development, the future development of Sixth and St. Joseph Street. We are in the beginning of a process whereby a parking study is the first phase. When the parking study is complete, then we will request qualifications from developers and create a steering committee, and select developers, and judge or grade or select development ideas, and proceed with the process from there. If we have no parking study as to capacity, and in relation to our downtown master plan especially, that will leave it upon the developer to guess. And I am afraid that it will prompt this body of elected officials to engineer their own parking solution, which I think would take away from the overall project. So to me, this is a smart move for those purposes. So this parking study will not just, we're not asking them to tell us what kind of parking problem we have, or that we need a parking space in front of every business. It's for the overall management, to gauge the overall management of our parking system. It'll be revenue analysis. It will touch on best practices. It will, it will give us what we need to move forward. Now, in the current parking management, the cars in parking spaces, whether they be in three-hour zones, or two-hour zones, or meters, our revenue into the parking lot and area fund is created from violations. That is absolutely backwards from the way it should be. The revenue should come from parking in premier parking spaces for a fee for that service, not for a fee for being five minutes late back to your car. It's very negative, and it's the wrong way to do business. The cost for the parking study will come from the parking lot and area fund, where all of that money is made by issuing parking tickets. That fund is self-supportive. Money from that fund will not be used to fix any streets or anything else, it is to maintain the parking system. I don't believe, whether it's me or anyone else that I've spoken to, would be opposed to privatizing whatever parking management would be appropriate. We are, we are open for suggestion, but I just wanted to say that, because I think there's, that's the required context for item number forty-one. And I will start with Jerry Wright.
I'm making motion to reapprove this.
Okay, we have a motion by Wright and a second by Nordstrom. Don't need the floor? Okay. Jason Solomon.
Stand by. All right.
Disappearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for the finance director, but the parking, our current parking funding source, that enterprise fund is significant and important. And my question is, who owns that? Who manages that? Who currently looks at the strategy for that enterprise fund that we've had for a long time? Who's responsible for it?
You can ask that question of our finance officer, Pauline Sumption.
All right.
Quite honestly, City of Rapid City does it, manages the parking system with three different departments. Public Works takes care of the maintenance of that, and any additional building needs, they oversaw the project when we did the third level on the ramp. The Police Department oversees the enforcement part of it, and my office oversees the leasing of the spots in the parking ramp, and also in our city-owned lots. There used to be a committee, you know, the 2007 PD report, there was a city center committee that was established for different individuals to look at some of that. There was a downtown parking committee that I had been a part of, that involved staff as well as Mr. Sefner, for the downtown business side of that. And that's kind of gone a little bit by the wayside. Quite honestly, this is one of those that has, in my opinion, never really had that full direction, because it is under three different departments. And I know, when I visited the City of Sioux Falls in January, they actually have their own person, who, you know, one person who's in charge of it, who looks at the rates, who looks at the needs, who does that visionary stuff, where here it's collective, and now it's a team of four people working on it, quite honestly.
So, you know, one of the questions some folks have asked is, if we, do we have the talent necessary within the city to come up with a plan ourselves? Not the city council, not that, I know we think we're experts on everything, we're not, but do we have the talent pool within our city staff who kind of already know, you've already laid out that we have, we kind of know what's premium parking, and maybe what some other thing communities have done? So I guess I would ask, I don't know who this is directed to, but I'll start with Mr. Mayor, and he can pass it on to his staff, but do we have that within our staff? Or are there, is it such a, do we need a subject matter expert on this to really tell us how to do this way more efficiently than we have?
I think it's possible we have the talent, but we don't have the available time and resources available to conduct a proper study, to come to the determination of what the best practices are in municipal parking management and enforcement. And I think that this city is primarily a victim of its own engineering throughout the past decades, and redoing our own parking, trying to make folks happy, or change things so that everybody gets what they want. I think we need to know how it works in the world, and have the courage, when we find that out, to implement it, because Rapid City is no different in its challenges, in things like parking and roadway usage, as is any other city.
And now, in my last minute here, I will say, I think one of the reasons why this is brought on is because we are trying to explore what to do with that lot at the corner of Sixth and Main. And part of what we decide to do, did I say St. Joe, excuse me, thank you, for Sixth and Main. Fifth and St. Joe, excuse me. For us to know what our next steps are, we need to know what our parking requirements will be. And it's not so much about our parking, what our parking requirements are today, because I don't think we're in dire need. I think, as someone said it best earlier, we do have a walking problem. I think that's true. But this isn't about what our needs are today, it's about what we need tomorrow, what we're looking into the future. If our downtown expands and grows, what kind of parking solutions do we need? So I hope that this study will look down the road, and not just where we're at right now. And with that, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the comments. I spoke about this at Legal and Finance, and you heard, I received a couple of people who contacted me through email, one through phone. And one of them was a downtown business, and their concern was that I was against downtown parking somehow. And the reality is, is they were talking about parking, how people have to go around the block multiple times to be able to park in front of their business to be able to come in. That's not what this study's about. This study's not going to improve that. This study is not going to deal with the on-the-street parking. It's a finite number of spots that are in front of your business, as Mr. Pettigrew spoke about earlier, and those are not going to change, unless, you know, we have buildings that are knocked down, and we create parking spots next to new business, or businesses that are currently existing. But that's not going to happen. So this is about new off-street parking. And in my opinion, this is not something that the city government belongs in, especially in light of this being part of some larger, or some part of the larger plan of the parking lot that we have on St. Joe and Fifth Street. We have had this as a non-taxing entity for approximately forty-one years. You would think that would be enough of a testament of failure by city government to get out of the way. We have proper zoning for that lot today. Now, this study, if anything, is going to come back and say, well, we definitely need to have a parking structure at that lot. Don't be surprised if that's one of the things that comes back in this study. So we, again, even though I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, the city, the school district, and the county have missed in property taxes, because we've decided that we know better about parking than the private enterprise does, we're going to make sure that this study comes back with a recommendation that that lot back there has a parking structure, whether there's a, whether there's a need for it or not. And I'll be honest, I mean, it's just crazy that we still want to continue to interject ourselves with this lot when it hasn't been a taxing entity since the 1970s. Let's get out of the way. We have zoning that takes care of that, what kind of business can go in the central business district. The government, city government does not belong in parking, and we should go down the road. Instead of doing a study, we should go down the road of getting out of the parking that we're in, so it can be privatized and create jobs and people who pay taxes, because the city doesn't. So we need to have that conversation. And the last thing we should do is employ a study that's going to come back and tell us we need to have a parking lot there, and that lot back there, so that any business that's going to build there, the city government's going to tell them that they have to have a parking structure, that we're going to find a developer that will put a parking structure much like we did before for the last twelve years, and that development and that developer did not help, that did not happen, we're all aware of that, Presidential Plaza. So I believe we need to pull back from this, and we need to get that lot out there for sale, and let the current central business district zoning make it a taxing entity finally. I yield. I yield.
Darla Drew.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments here. I did serve on the parking, downtown parking committee that studied things in 2006 and 2007. It's nice that all that was accumulated and people remembered all the work we did on it. I'm just afraid that will happen again. If we do another study, it will just be swept under the carpet and five years from now we'll be wondering what happened. We changed the hours to three hours of parking in 2015. That was a business-driven decision and that's what this parking situation downtown is all about. Because when I was on the parking committee, I looked into it and it seemed like it was a revenue-neutral situation, that we weren't really making any money off the tickets, that , you know, the price of enforcement kind of leveled out. So why were we making people move? Because the businesses needed them to move. It wasn't for any other purpose. And essence of businesses are, you know, the major reason we have a downtown, of course we want to make them happy. We want to make them, you know, want to be downtown and we want to have people have a nice place to shop and that, you know, easily, you know, we are South Dakotans, we're kind of spoiled, we want to park wherever we want to park. And that's why, you know, you're seeing Rushmore Crossing is booming because you can drive right up, you can park in front of it and you can go right into the store you want to be in, and that's what we want in South Dakota. But we can't give that to anybody in our downtown area. We can't give that to everybody. There's going to be times when it's really full and I love seeing that. I love seeing people that can't park downtown because that means we're flourishing and that means we're busy. So I guess we can try and solve this again, but I'm not sure how. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. When Mr. Pettigrew came forward and introduced himself and put Jerry Wright and myself in the same category, I was, I think I was flattered about that comment, that we could remember that far back about all the events that took place in the past. So, thank you, Rod. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I'm looking at within the RFP proposal. Yes, I am concerned about the potential costs and the 2007 study is about ten years old, but looking at the points that are in the scope of the project, I think most of our concerns are addressed within those scopes. There's six or seven different points within that scope that can be addressed and be looked at from all of these concerns that are being addressed to us tonight. I'm also interested in the parking that could potentially be taking place all the way over to the School of Mines. And at one time, I recall also that the previous Public Works Director even mentioned that there is potential for parking even over on the west side of Mount Rushmore Road. That would be included in, within this study the way I'm reading the scope of the project. So I can fully support the need for taking on this project and taking a look at it, but yes, I am concerned about the cost of it. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I was hoping we'd have this one done by now, but we're not. And I didn't forget about Rod's comments. I think there's some little historical perspective that needs to be brought into this because with the question of why is the city involved, I think we need to understand that all of the on-street parking is on-city property. We also need to understand that the central business district, which is the downtown, is a zoning ordinance that does not require off-street parking, never has. So the institution was established probably seventy years ago, the city was going to be handling the parking and it has handled the parking. And we will probably continue to handle the parking. And I think it's more most important we do this study, as the mayor said earlier, because we need to address how are we going to manage this for the future? What decisions can we make to help the downtown grow? And we are by historic precedence in reality that we own most of the property, we are involved, we have to be involved. And I think we can do a good job. And I ask everyone to support this motion. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interesting conversation that a few of us that have been here for a while have sat through a few times before. You know, that piece of property is going to be challenging no matter what because like Jerry said, with our downtown zoning, someone comes in and builds, they could build a lot without putting any parking in and we could lose a lot of spots as a city. But on the other end of that, if we really dictate what private business is going to do, we might dictate something coming on that lot completely out. So I think we've got a lot of challenges. I think it's the beginning. I'm not sure the study is the way to go. I think there's a lot of conversation that could be had before then. You know, I do agree with Mr. Laurenti that the city and not the parking in front of the businesses in the right way, but the parking lots that we have and the parking structure that we have should be in the private hands. You know, I think that there's a demand for it out there. The reason we don't think there's a demand now is we keep that price so low that anybody trying to come in on the private sector can't compete. And I think that that will be a hard pill for a lot of people to swallow when all of a sudden their parking doubles, but if the private sector is going to be involved, the private sector has to make a profit. And that's a problem of the public side. We can do these things without making a profit because we can always take more money from the taxpayers if we need it. So, you know, I think if we, there's a lot of things that we could do. A lot of it has to do with mentality. You know, people have to realize that, you know, and I don't know what the numbers are now, but I know three years ago when I worked for the county, that parking structure, which was two blocks from the downtown core, was about fifty percent vacant all the time. So, you know, there is parking if people are willing to walk and it is hard to do. You know, I know, I do the same thing. You know, I went and ate with some clients the other day at the firehouse and I went around the block three or four times before I could get a parking spot within a half a block. But it's a mentality that's going to have to change in the future with growth. So I think that we got a lot of work to do here. I'm not sure the parking study is actually the right thing to do and the right way to go and the right step to start. I've seen way too many studies that are done and put on a shelf and collect dust and nothing ever happens. So, anyway, thank you.
Lisa Modric.
Almost, I need my turn. Thank you, Mayor. So we did have an address by Mr. Pettigrew that talked about the walking problem and we've done a walking study and I commend the city for doing the walking study. I think that was cool. It identified areas that are safe, that are non-safe, places where we need more lighting to be inviting, that will allow others to park often in certain areas. So we're going in that direction, but can we change the mentality of a walking problem? No. Can we change the workings of a parking problem? Yes, probably with a study, it's going to design it. We can't change people's thinking for walking farther for health or for other reasons, but we are making the community much more desirable for walking. If you think back, walking ten years ago, just even Kansas City Street and forward, it was not a beautiful and safe feeling to walk from along that way. And now we're spreading out our safety and our aesthetics and our lighting. We've got the lighting coming sometime soon that will make it even safer for our walking and it'll completely transition people into those times. I had a seventy-one-year-old today was one of my calls and he said, by golly, I walk fifteen miles a day. Why doesn't the rest of the world? Well, I wish we did, but we're not there yet, but I think the next generations are. So today, we can't change the walking concept or the problem, but we can take a study and figure out what we need to do on our parking. We're at seventy thousand, seventy-three thousand people and cars aren't going away yet, so we're going to continue to grow and put demand on. And we were talking about the 1990s and 1970s when there was a study done, at least a grassroots study. At that time, I think, you know, people, the big thing was to commute. Gas was high. You had families getting cars and go places. Now every family member drives their car and parks to go downtown. So we've, you know, it's one car per one person. So we've got a, we've got a creation here. Parking structures, I don't think it's a thing of the past, I think it's the thing of the present. So we need to be very open-minded about that. We need to allow our tourists to find a place to park. We need to find our locals a place to park. We need to build our sales tax based on our sales and I don't think we should get in the way of somebody that wants to shop, dine, and sleep downtown. So let's see where this goes if we make it happen. We've lost nothing. I think our nominees are here, are the costs. We're RFP-ing it. Let's see what comes back and then we have more decisions to make. So what can we hurt if we go forward now? I'd like to see something get done. It's been forty years. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Well, as we approach nine o'clock here, I do have some good news. And the good news is that the downtown area master plan did not just sit on a shelf because that was one of the recommendations of this plan was that, quote, "Rapid City has not kept up with best practices in the management of its parking resource, creating an opportunity to introduce new practices and technologies." So we are actually acting on a study. So round of applause. That is very, very good news. The other thing I want to point out is that, yeah, this has been looked at, but I think if, you know, well-intentioned task forces and committees, if we could have solved it, we would have. And it's not, the way I understand this, it's not just looking at, this is not complaint-driven. It's not what people are complaining about right now. It's talking about the growth and expansion and future planning for Rapid City. And you know what? It's about time we do some of that. So I yield.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, we're looking for requests for proposals, so this means that firms would be interviewed because I, my recollection as to why we were doing, or my thought as to why we were doing this parking study is when we were looking at the future of the Sixth and St. Joe, we were wanting to go out for requests for qualifications and we didn't want to go in there with preconceived ideas as to what has to happen. So, and I think we all want, I think everybody wants to get that land into private hands and, or as much as we can so that it's paying property taxes. But, you know, whether we agree or not, where we have a parking problem right now is that once you start developing that land, you put a surcharge of about, you lose one hundred and thirty-two spots. So you surcharge downtown with, you got to find a home for those, plus then if something gets built, you've got to absorb that new demand, plus part of our downtown comprehensive plan calls for more housing to increase the density. I don't know if all that's going to happen, but what we've, what we found out on the Sixth and St. Joe so far is how we've approached it hasn't been successful to this date. A lot of us are, play a part in that. But to get the best qual, best qualified request for proposal, request for qualification is to have the best information available. And I hate spending money on studies, but I really think we have to have some kind of a baseline to provide to these people that are going to look at that project to see where we're at because we're going to look to them, as I see it, we're going to look to them for their recommendations because if they've done, they've done projects in other towns, they're going to be able to share, and they're going to be able to know what, if they build a facility in portion of that land, what kind of parking load they can handle on their end. So I just see it as a necessary evil right now. I don't mean to use that word, but I just think it's necessary because I just think that we have to have the highest quality of information possible so that we give this Sixth and St. Joe project the highest possible chance of success. And with that, may I yield? Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the question. I'm going to respond to a couple of things because I think we're off on the context again. Well, let's, let's look at this. The RFP doesn't cost the city anything. We'll get to review the proposals when they're here. We'll get to go through the consultant interview process. We're out nothing by giving out an RFP. The downtown development plan calls for housing, also calls for expanding our downtown to the east. And John Roberts is exactly right, that county parking facility is half-full. Well, that's going to be taken into consideration in any study. And in a study, I'm not going to insult anyone, but a study is not what was done in 2007. That was an analysis of the existing conditions and some recommendations, far different from understanding best practices across the country. If you've traveled and parked, you know that parking is handled a variety of different ways. I view this parking study as a significant first step to developing Sixth and St. Joe. I, for one, am not interested in being part of appraising that lot, putting it up for sale and having the first person walk in and buy it, put a second-hand store there. That's the way the private market works and there is more benefit to development than collecting tax revenue. We are helping to create an experience in our downtown. We hear it all the time. We can read it by the hundreds on TripAdvisor and other things. This plays into our existence, who we are. Not doing this study will recreate the cultural parking problem that we have created by ourselves over the past decades. We are no good at this, as mentioned before. Why do we think we're smarter? And it's because we're too close to it. We don't know what the rest of the world is doing. And doing the RFP and even accepting the RFP and getting the results of the study does not mean that the city is bound to pay for a parking ramp anywhere. And the idea that we're going to pre-engineer the outcome of this study to say what we want it to say as a means to get what we secretly want is embarrassing. That shouldn't be who we are. We should not, we should not be thinking this way. If you don't want the parking study, that's fine, but this parking study is the first step to a better development in downtown. And it will be the first parking study we have on record. So let's have the vote. There's a motion on the floor for approval and let's go to a roll-call vote.
Doyle.
Aye.
Estes.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Wright.
Yes.
Modric.
Yes.
Roberts.
No.
Nordstrom.
Yes.
Drew.
Aye.
Carried seven to two.
Okay, thank you. Onto Public Works Committee items, starting with the number forty-two. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number forty-two is just the annual update from the Sustainability Committee. I do understand that we have a presentation today. If you gentlemen would approach the podium, Mayor will take it from there. I-
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm the chairman for the Rapid City Sustainability Committee and my name is Kelly Moore and we have before you five of the eleven members. I'll let them introduce themselves and we're going to kind of do a round robin on doing the presentation. We are here to present our annual report for the Rapid City Sustainability Committee. First is Jason Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for having us here tonight. I had a mentor tell me to be brief, be brilliant, and be gone, so that's what we're going to try to do tonight. We're going to give you a little bit of history of what we've done, our purpose, talk about our role in the city, some of our accomplishments and events that we've done and the future direction that we're heading. We were first established in fall of 2011 off of some work that the Green Sustainable Cities Task Force- Cities Task Force did, and then we're approved by the mayor and the city council in April of 2012. Our main purpose is to educate, to encourage education and promote education, stewardship, and policy for leadership to help make our community a more sustainable place. And sustainability, I looked it up today to see how many new definitions there were, and there's just about as many definitions as there are groups of people creating these definitions. But in short, sustainability is doing what we need to do to sustain our lives, but not compromising the ability for future generations to be able to meet their needs. And so you got economic, social, and environmental aspects of it. And if you could go back one slide, that diagram shows you kinda, it's not doing something for the environment by itself, or something for the economy, or something for the society, but it's putting it all together as a whole. And you see the dark green spot in the center there, that's, that's sustainability is when you're making all three of these work together in, in a project, in a, in a vision for moving forward into the future. This slide here shows the role that we've had within the city. I'm gonna keep it brief, and since we're up here standing in front of you guys tonight, I want you guys to know that we're a resource for you guys. So we're not up here, we're not gonna ask you guys for anything, but we're gonna ask you what we could do to help you guys. So we want you to know that we're here to help you guys, and I asked the mayor that question, and he said, "Be bold and be heard." So we want you guys to know that we're here to help however we can, and we'll, I'll pass it over to Kevin.
So this slide just shows briefly some of our membership. We have a varied group of people across the city with diverse backgrounds, and then we also have liaisons. So we appreciate that relationship that we have with the city council, with the liaison relationship. Many of our members are here this evening. Next slide, I want to show you some of our 2016 events. We've been very busy as a committee. The first thing on here is the International Sustainability Conference. That was an opportunity, we had to send a committee member, a city government employee, and a city council person to a sustainability event. And the rest of these things listed here were opportunities to engage and educate the public on sustainability. That's what we really focus on, and really opportunities to partner with other organizations. We haven't done any of these things in a vacuum. So the next two things, Dark Skies Event and Earth Day Expo, were the first annual events, which you'll hear about the second annual events coming up soon. So those are great events, and we encourage you to participate them, in them. The thing we really want to focus on is Sustainability Conference, which we will show on the next slide.
Eric Hykes. We had a great conference this year. It was kicked off by the mayor. Sarah Calhoun from Red Ants Pants came over and described a woman-owned business succeeding in a small community. It was very empowering. We had about twelve different partners there. We had about seventy attendees. Actually, we did a little bit of interstate commerce, and we drew from communities in South Dakota to attend the event. There were some great educational sessions, strongly represented from both Black Hill State University and South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. Excellent menu, buffalo empanadas grown locally, quite good. And then, a good think tank, lots of educational sessions, and a good sense of camaraderie with two very good infield tours to finish it off.
And this next slide shows some of our other accomplishments. Just wanna highlight two things here. We did start a committee Facebook page, so people can find out more about sustainability in the committee, in the community with Rapid City Sustainability on Facebook, in addition to our city website or webpage. And then the next thing right above it is our sustainability award application. We updated and streamlined this, so hopefully the council is familiar with this award. We give this out to recognize individuals, organizations, and businesses in the community for some of the sustainable work that they're doing. My name's Kevin Crosby.
Right now, I'm gonna actually take a moment to introduce Lisa Zeller. She's the person that put this all together, and she's running our slides for us. She's a brilliant person to have on our committee. What I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to talk about the future. And we picked tonight as the night that we wanted to present our annual report, as it is the beginning, oops, it is the beginning of the forty-seventh Annual Cleanup Day, which is part of what we're doing. And we actually tied this into an almost all-week-long program. Friday night, we have Dark Sky Event, the second one, down to Main Street Square from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. March for Science. It includes South Dakota School of Mines, a brilliant young gentleman there, that's a student, he's put this all together. And it starts at the School of Mines, and it ends up down at the 4-H Building, down at the fairgrounds. Or on Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna have the Earth Day Expo. And we have a bunch of interesting things. We have two stages for speakers, both for kids and for adults. We have electric vehicles. If you'd like to come down and try out an electric vehicle, we have a couple of those. And we have food vendors, shows, and music. And along with that, we're also cosponsoring the Mountain Film Festival at the Alx Theater on Saturday and Sunday night. Some of our, one of the other things that really guides us is our strategic plan. And we've worked on this strategic plan for over a year now. And although this is kind of our guiding light, if you will, for where we plan on going, and we don't plan on covering every one of these areas, but these are the areas that if it should happen to come up, either as an issue in your city, in the city council or some other way, then we will focus on that particular one. So we're really kinda driven by the public for most part of it, and we do have a little bit of self-motivation ourselves, but really what we do is react to what the public wants. Any questions?
That was efficient.
Was it sustainable?
Good job.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for all you're doing. Appreciate that. We'll go to Jason Solomon. I think he has a comment or a question.
Well, first of all, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the presentation, and just say, "Keep up the good work." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next item, please. Forty-three.
Forty-three is an update on the revised FEMA flood insurance rate map, special flood hazard area, as a result of the recently completed project. There's a detailed analysis of Federal Emergency Management Agency Special Flood Hazard Areas. And I understand we are also getting an update on this, a presentation on this as well. Thank you for staying with us at such a late hour.
Oh, it's all right. So I'm John Leefers with A2S. I was the consultant that led up this project for the city. And earlier tonight, there was a question on, well, what is the, what is the floodplain? What's the difference with the floodway? So I'll talk just really briefly on a little bit of the background of what, what the definitions are. And you'll see these colors come up throughout the presentation. So the top view and the bottom view are pretty much the same area. It's just looking, one is, the top view is from, if you were in a helicopter, looking down on the ground. And the bottom view is a picture, if you would take the slice of the river and the floodplain. So the two things that I'll point out is the blue area, and the blue and the red area is what we typically call the hundred-year floodplain. And, you know, you may have heard that, well, we got two-hundred-year floods in ten years. You know, that doesn't make any sense. And if you think about what a hundred-year flood really means, is every year, there's one in a hundred chance that it's gonna happen. So if you, you know, imagine a gigantic die that has a hundred sides, and one side has a flood on it, ninety-nine sides don't. You roll that die every year, and every once in a while, it's gonna come up with a hundred-year flood. The area that's hashed in red as well, that's what we call the floodway, and that's really where the most damage can really happen. That's where the velocities are higher. And so FEMA regulates that floodway to the, to the more stringent standard than the, just the blue area. And then the tan area that's on the outside, that's what we call the five-hundred-year flood. Just, it's a bigger flood, so if you take that hundred-sided die, make it a five-hundred-sided die, and still put it on one, flood on one side, you roll that die, less chance of it happening, but if it does, it's more severe. So when you hear me using those terms throughout the presentation, that's a little bit of So, you know, throughout Rapid City, there's floodplains in various places. You can see the large floodplain corridor that moves through the center, and that's Rapid Creek. And our project area was the kind of three main areas. Haynes Avenue on the north side, Robinsdale Watershed on the southeast side, and then the South Canyon Watershed on the, on the west side. And at this scale, you know, you can't really see, you know, what's going on, what potential issues there might be. But this is a zoom-in of one of the areas in the Robinsdale Watershed. And you can see in that, that blue area, which is that hundred-year floodplain, there's a number of homes that are, that are shown in the floodplain, and this pattern repeats itself throughout those three project areas. And if you, you know, looked at all the homes and businesses in those three watersheds, there's over two-hundred homes and businesses that are mapped in the hundred-year floodplain. And that's, it's a, it's an important thing to remember because it costs real money to the community, and that kinda manifests itself in two main ways. And the key is, is that whenever a home or a business is in the, in the hundred-year floodplain, and they have a mortgage, FEMA requires that they have floodplain insurance. And I apologize, that looks like my resolution screen is hacking off the bottom. But if you're outside that hundred-year floodplain, you don't have to have insurance. FEMA says you can certainly buy insurance. So if, like, you're in the five-hundred-year floodplain, you can buy insurance, it's a lower rate, but you don't have to. And so when you, and the other part that it affects from a financial standpoint is that homes that are in the hundred-year floodplain tend to start decreasing in value because every year you're paying flood insurance, and so that's just added cost to whoever would buy that home. So when we're looking at, you know, floodplains, we wanna make sure they're accurate. And so one of these, the reasons why these three watersheds were selected is, you know, there's reasons to believe that the mapping was inaccurate. And when we, when we create a map, there's kinda two main aspects of that that go into creating the map. And the first is what we call the hydrology. And that means how much water is coming down the corridor or the stream. So, you know, how hard is it gonna rain, and how much that's gonna run off and get to the, to the, to the stream or creek. And the first, and the second part of that is the hydraulics, which is how that water moves through the system. And we had reason, working with the city, to believe that both of those had some concerns. So on the hydrology side, so how much water? So FEMA, when they came through and mapped this area, they used a fairly crude approach, to be, to be honest. And they assumed that if you looked at all the water that contributes for the whole watershed, they assumed that that started at the top end of the drainage as well. So they were sending a lot more water through the system than what was reality. And then we looked at a much better way to figure out how much water was coming through there. So just looking at the watersheds, you know, there's significant reductions there, which reduce the flow, so that, how much water. On the hydraulic side, in 2015, the city collected new LiDAR. And what LiDAR is, is basically flying airplanes in the air, and they're basically collecting topographic data. A really cool technology. It's been around for a bit, but it's getting better all the time. FEMA is using older LiDAR, so we use the newer stuff. And where LiDAR tends to break down is when you're looking at a, like, an actual channel. It doesn't pick up that detail as well. So we collected survey to make sure we were analyzing things correctly. And finally, we created a brand-new model to just make sure that we were looking at it the best way possible. So from a schedule standpoint, we had, we started this project in late 2015. Our contract said that we had to have a submittal to FEMA for all three watersheds by May thirty-first of that year. So we actually got things to FEMA about a month ahead of schedule to keep things moving. And FEMA takes a while. They look at things in quite a bit of detail. It, you know, typically takes five to six months to work through that process. So they issued approvals in October of 2016. And then they have a six-month, in this, or in this case, a hundred-and-twenty-day appeal period where a homeowner or a business can say, "Look, I don't agree with this." If they have technical reasons, they can appeal it, but there are no appeals that were issued. So they all became effective in late February and early March. So I'm gonna kinda go through a little bit in terms of what those changes look like from a community standpoint. Let's see here. It's going a little slow here. So what I'm gonna show here is kind of a side-by-side map of the two areas. Zoom in here. What technology works for me today? All right, so the map on the, on the right is the, is the floodplain that used to exist. And I'm just gonna kinda focus on kind of some of the key areas here. I apologize. Somebody shut down my laptop, and so that must've killed the connection. Can I get someone help here? So while we're, while we're doing that, I'm gonna come back through here. My connection is not working here. I'll keep going here on the presentation here. So, you know, I mentioned earlier that over two-hundred homes were in the regulatory floodplain when this project started. And because of our, the improved approach of looking at the hydrology and the hydraulics, for Haynes Avenue, we were able to remove over ninety structures. Haynes Avenue was actually one of the watersheds where a couple of businesses were added in just because the hydraulics weren't, looked at correctly by FEMA. Robinsdale, almost over fifty structures were removed from the floodplain. And South Canyon, almost eighty structures were removed from the floodplain. Just by not really doing, you know, counting for projects or anything like that, it was mainly just looking at things better and doing a better understanding of risk. In terms of the homeowners, in terms of the information that was provided to the homeowners, so FEMA requires that public notices be made when floodplains change either up or down. So we issued, in the Rapid City Journal, public notices in late July and early August. But since most people don't read the public notices section, at least I don't personally, Mary Bosworth went ahead and sent out over six-hundred individual letters to all the homeowners and businesses that were either benefited or impacted by the floodplain change when things became effective, so in spring 2017. And from a, you know, city council standpoint, in terms of, you know, engaging with homeowners, you know, what, what do homeowners need to do as a result of this change? So homeowners shouldn't assume that their insurance companies or their, their mortgage lenders are going to automatically be checking us all the time. So just because things have changed officially from a FEMA standpoint, sometimes the mortgage lenders need, I would say, most times mortgage lenders need to be notified or that things have changed. So homeowners should contact their lender insurance agent. The difficulty that I've found, and, you know, lots of other people have found as well, is that, you know, the mortgage companies, they're private entities, they're not, you know, they're, they're implementing FEMA's mandates. So you're gonna get different, you're gonna see different requirements from different lenders. Some lenders are really great at saying, "Yep, new information." Some lenders are really great at saying, yep, new information, we're good to go. Other lenders, it takes them a while to figure out what they need to do. So there might be some paperwork on the backend to get everything squared away. If there are any questions? So the city of Rapid City has Rapid Map, which is a great website for information, has the new floodplain boundaries already shown on there. So a homeowner can go and look on that, say, hey, you know, looks like I'm out, I need to move forward and contact my lender. And then Mary Bosworth, the city floodplain administrator is a great resource, and that's her, you know, contact information if homeowners have any questions. So with that, are there any questions? I apologize for the technical difficulties, but, so are there any questions?
I guess not. Good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry, Chair D. Doyle. I'm sorry.
Talk about technological challenges.
Waiting for you to raise your hand or wave or something, I guess.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge.
I was second.
And I know for some people at home, this probably seemed like a really dry topic, but this is something I personally was so, it was not a pun, I'm tired. So excited to see this, so.
I eventually got there.
It's all going to fall apart now. But I honestly want to thank you for your time and the attention to detail because there were some discharge rates and things that I looked at back when this came out and, and, you know, was getting all the phone calls and emails from people that were going to have to pay $1,200 to $1,500 a year in flood insurance on top of everything else. And it was really, I mean, for them, a crisis, you know? It was, it was such a problem. So to see this happen, and just for the record, and hopefully people are, people are seeing this, some of it can be retroactively paid back. So check with your mortgage company, see what you need to do. But for those of you that have paid, there may be an opportunity to recoup some of that since it was unnecessary. And I think Mary might have more information on that, so I can, so that number that was up on the screen, hopefully you wrote it down. Or call the city and ask for Mary Bosworth, and she can get you that information. But again, thank you for your work on this. Mary, thank you for your work on this. This was, you know, I can, I can leave six years on the council on a happy note because this was awesome. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Go to Jerry Wright now.
I've got to follow charity with somewhat the same words, and I feel it's a great accomplishment. This is your city government doing for you what they should be doing, and I thank Dale and Mary and the consulting firm for doing this. And this is paid for by the drainage fee, by the way. And it's not a simple task to get this done. And I was all ready to get this solved for these people by building, and Dale said, no, wait, I think we can do this without having to push a bulldozer down the creek. And he's right. And so thank you, Dale. But I think this is a lesson for all of us to say that we persistence in looking what's right. 200 homes, and I believe insurance is $1,000 to $2,000 a year, if I'm correct in my thinking, for floodplain, that's a whopping savings to our taxpayers on an annual basis. And that's going to go on forever. And I think it's, the drainage fee, which some people ridiculed over times, has given us money, not only for this, but for other improvements that are going to pay big, big dividends in the very short future. So good job, and thank you. And Rapid City, you can celebrate tonight, because for one time you got a break. Really well deserved, too. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to acknowledge? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number 44 is appeal of denied exception request from KTM Design Solutions on behalf of Hague Brothers LLC to waive curb, gutter, water, and sewer in Samus Trail until allow for a 26-foot-wide paved service with grass ditches and sidewalks and a 70-foot right-of-way. I make a recommendation to deny the appeal, and I'll yield.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny, second from Steve Laurenti. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hague, if you could come up, please, I have a question, if I may. On this particular item, I remember back in May, I think it was May, well, actually, it's in the agenda item as well, but back last year, this was appealed previously, and it was denied, or it was denied and then appealed to the city council but was withdrawn before it was decided by the council. Can you explain why it was withdrawn?
I'm trying to recall if we, was this particular matter withdrawn at that time? Okay. I think it was to, oh, yes. The actual site of the proposed platted lot shifted to the west approximately 110, 120 feet. So the appeal from prior was not germane anymore to that particular platted site.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I just want to, I just want to caution my colleagues, you probably all have read it. However, on the agenda item, under the agenda item summary, the staff's recommendations on this particular issue are extensive. They're well-connected to neighboring properties and other development around it. So if you haven't read that, and I'm sure you all have, it's very extensive, it's very informational, and I believe that we've had this, we've talked about this as a council quite a few times in the last year, that when we have these, like much we had out at, in the valley, South Valley Drive, we did make an exception there, I believe. But however, which is still a significant improvement to the road, because I've driven down it, walked down it during previous elections, that road needs help. But in this particular case, I believe we need to stand behind staff. It's very extensive. And as far as us coming back in the future to be able to do those things, much like a warp, we have never done those things. We don't track those things. And I believe we need to do the right thing here, whether it is popular or not. We need to start holding the line on these developments so that we don't leave it up to future property owners to have to foot those costs. And I think that is one of our biggest problems, going to be one of our biggest challenges as we move forward with a lot of the things that we've done warps on and councils before us for decades. So I think we need to begin to do it properly. I yield.
Senator Darla Drew.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for Kent Hague. On your stormwater runoff and where you're talking about the grass swells and the vegetative ditches, I've been doing some reading on that, and it really is a, I don't know, way forward for the future. To me, once you put in curb and gutter, it's cement, you know? You can't go back and restore nature. So could you tell us a little bit more about that? Because I'm really interested in this as we go forward, as we look at things we're doing to develop new areas, why not look at new solutions as well?
Thank you, and I agree more emphatically than ever as I've gotten to know more about the different effects of stormwater runoff and ground pollution, absorption, propensity for additional velocity for flooding. It all comes together, and a big culprit is curb and gutter. Now, Mr. Laurenti is correct. The comments are extensive for this plat. This plat, and we have every intention, and we have complied with most already, there's a few issues left yet, one of which is construction of a regional retention pond that we are going to do. That is a product of tens of thousands of dollars of studies and so forth. And we've designed this to handle stormwater in the most effective way possible for a development that's going to have a lot of impervious surface. And that all runs to Moon Meadows and Drive, and goes to a retention pond. However, this is Samus Trail. It's an agrarian setting completely. And the, to put in curb and gutter, to ask a developer or the city to spend a significant amount of money putting in curb and gutter when it exacerbates the very things we spent a good part of tonight trying to address and trying to prevent. So don't ask me to spend money to put more pollutants concentrated into the ground and increase the velocity of propensity of flooding. The, Mr. Comifer, the rancher, that their family's had that for years, they have gone, their stock pond has, will be the recipient of, and is the recipient of the Samus Trail stormwater, much of it. This will create additional ekelei, additional suspended solids. One of the presentations that Mr. Stetson provided was the total suspended solids are cut in less than half in vegetated swells rather than curb and gutter. And ekelei is cut by over two-thirds for distribution when it's put through a vegetative swell rather than curb and gutter. So thank you for asking that. I don't, we've obviously spent a lot of money on this. We want it to be right, and we, I think we've demonstrated that on this and other projects. We're not.
I'm going to interrupt you right there. Casey Peterson was here a little bit earlier and was talking about the, I don't know, elevations. Have you done anything about those, those particular questions? Have you looked at that? Is that a problem that we should be worried about if we go with vegetative ditches, so to speak?
The elevation of that particular segment of Samus Trail, actually, I do believe is about where this future platted area is. And it's a good, I'm glad he pointed that out because part of the road rebuilding process, which we aren't out opposed to, where this, this 700 feet of road, we are going to make sure it's proper elevation, proper grade, and we're even agreeing to pave it for dust mitigation, as long as we can use, especially since we can hopefully use the vegetative swells to absorb the additional impervious surface runoff. But that will be raised, so get rid of the, a lot of that, it should get rid of that indentation that you say drifts and floods. Same thing with on the other end, although it doesn't have anything to do with this Samus Trail. We'll be doing the final grade and so forth and landscaping so you don't get mud running onto the sidewalks and things like that as well. And we are getting rid of the dirt stockpile as part of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interesting item. I was looking at it on Public Works and listening to it there and just doing a little bit of research on it. You know, but one of the things that I really find interesting is we're really not discussing what could be done on this project tonight. And on the last council meeting, we waived a sewer line in a project. About a year ago, we waived a water line on a project. I mean, but this project alone, unless somebody else came in, I don't think there was anybody that was even going to speak on this item. So, you know, I think one of the things that we need to look at, when we're looking at these projects individually, is if we're going to make recommendations on other projects, on different projects, we need to kind of be fair across the board. Because I do know the property that you're talking adjacent to this is probably not going to develop anytime soon. And I think that the sewer line that we waived on the last council meeting, that area's probably going to grow out before this area does. So, you know, I mean, I just think that we need to look at some of the things that we're doing. Thank you.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. And when you were talking about the other project that we looked at and we waived, there was a compromise there, too, because we talked about dry sewer versus actual water that was going to be charged. And so there was a, I mean, there's a difference there. When we, when we're building to nowhere, we've got to be very careful because we are adding additional costs. But then we also have to be concerned with those that are in the surrounding areas that are hit by the swells. I mean, if the water is, is in a swell development versus a finished development, who maintains that swell? Who cleans it out? I know we have ditches all around the city that are in that type of long-ago development of some swells. I know some that are really close to us right now downtown, and one of their complaints is nobody, nobody takes care of it. So then what happens? You develop, we've waived this, and we've got water swells, and we're doing good things for pervious water, we're clearing it through, but who maintains it then? Who's, who's going to take care of that area while it's sitting there waiting for a development to happen? And then how well it affect? Because the building shifted, we're going to have more traffic somehow go in both directions. I mean, it's like Sims build it and they will come, and traffic likes to move around whatever they can follow. So I hope that we're doing the right thing when we're talking about only doing a partial on this and what the big picture is. And if we're going with a sewer, dry sewer and a dry water for future, we tend to be resistant about the know-where's. Where it's like, why are we adding these costs to the people that need, we need these homes, we need these apartments, we're in demand. But then what is the right thing to do, to do the finished work now? This is a tough one. We've been looking at this with a lot of projects this last year, and we try to find the right balance, and I think the fairness is a really big deal here. So if we don't, if we don't request this to be finished as being directed by our staff, what happens with the unfinished product when you're built and on your way down healing way?
The development of the area to the south is something that, again, according to the owner now, who again has had the ranch in his family for 100 years, has absolutely no desire to develop. So that's, that's aspect, but someday it will. It's on the edge of the city. I agree. And that developer, whether it's 10 years from now, 20 years from now, or 50 years from now, maybe it's going to be us. But to have them build half or all, or assess it, there's many other mechanisms to put in additional water and sewer. And if it's determined at that time because of growth that curb and gutter need to go in for whatever reason, because physics have changed, who knows? But in this particular area, the maintenance, going back to that question, the maintenance of the vegetated swells, which are the ditches that are currently there, will be the same and continue to be the same. In fact, probably better maintained now that there's a development, a property owner next to it. And actually, we, the land on both sides, it's a sliver of ours is on the, is the south side of Samus Trail as well, as well. And so the, the maintenance will fall to us as it has. We try to hay the ditches, mow the ditches, those types of things, because you want it looking nice next to your developed area. So the ditch maintenance actually, I think, has been pretty good and will continue to be, to be very good.
Okay, we're out of time.
Not till you.
We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to deny with the exception of the water and electrical conduit. If I could get a second, I'd like to keep the floor and explain. A substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a tough one, and I appreciate the second. And I tell you, I guess I want, where I'm coming from, I mean, if you're going to spend all the money to put the paving in, dust proving, put the paving in, and then to come back later and tear the paving up to put the sewer in the middle of the road, I mean, that, that's why I think the sewer should go in now. No, no, this is 700-foot-a-road. We put, we put manholes about every 400 feet, so hopefully we'd work with it, with them so that, you know, there wouldn't have to be two men. Hopefully this could get worked out to keep that at a minimum. The second thing is, is that we, I've got rural sections all over my ward. I mean, you look at Carriage Hills, you look at North Berry Pine Road, and you look at all the rural section roads we have in this town with no curb and gutter, and it just, it starts to creep and crawl, and it, and it, it goes to heck. I want to use a different word, but it, it, and the time to put curb and gutter on a road is before you pave it. You know, the water doesn't go in the road, it can go in the ditch, and the water can come up as healing way gets developed and then come across. But I, I just think that the sewer and the curb and gutter are, are very important components at the time of asphalting. And, and that's where I'm at. You know, and I, I get the ditches and the grass, and we're spending a lot of money, we use, in town, we, we use curb and gutter, drop inlets and concrete pipe to convey our water. But I think we're spending a fortune right now on Omaha Street. We're putting in, I think, swales and detention ponds so that that water that was carried down those curb and gutters settle, the solids settle out before they go into the creek. So I mean, we're, we're doing that, but I, I don't think it's realistic to think that we throw out curb and gutter in this town and go to grass ditches. And secondly, you know, and I, I know the Hagues and they're good developers, and they're going, they don't like my idea, but, but when I look at this and the TIF, I mean, they're bullish on this area. I mean, I, they wouldn't have done this if they didn't think this area was going to develop. So, so that's where, that's how I. So, so that's where, that's how I arrived at my conclusion for my, my motion. Thank you, I yield.
Can we clarify your motion, please? It is to, it is to deny the appeal with the exception of?
Of, of, allow, it is having them put, so they would put asphalt, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and sewer in. They would not put in water or the streetlight conduit, because those can go outside of the, those are utilities that come along later.
Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Hague, I see that your engineer's here, do you mind if I ask him a question real quick?
Please.
Thank you. I doubt if you have it with you tonight, but you have to have some kind of a grading and a drainage plan for this subdivision. And I imagine any swales, holes, whatever, on the property eventually have to come into compliance of that planned unit development, and your drainage has to go somewhere, it can't just sit unless it's a detention pond.
Correct, yeah. Actually, a lot of the drainage for the apartments, it all drains towards Moon Meadows Drive, so there's a very small part that's currently in the Samus Trail right of way, and there's some existing to the west that would drain it, so it's a, it's a pretty small site, and I don't think, the way it's being graded and developed, there'll be drainage issues, and there'll probably have to be a culvert under the road for that low spot that was mentioned earlier.
So either it will have an opportunity to drain out, or it will be added, you'll add in soil so your drainage goes in a different direction, or wherever you want it to go to.
Correct, yeah, there's, actually, currently, there's a larger area existing than we've proposed that drains towards Samus Trail in this area.
Okay, thank you, that was just something I wanted to clarify.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, which is to deny the appeal with a couple of exceptions, as noted. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have some confusion on the motion now. The motion is to deny the appeal with the exception of the?
Water.
Water and streetlight conduit. Okay, now that we've clarified that, let's have, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes with one no from Darla Drew. Okay, thank you. Next item, please. Well, let's see, that's number 45. Mayor's items, confirm the reappointments of Sandy Deagle and Lloyd LaCroix to the Community Investment Committee. A motion by Wright, second by Doyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing items, items 46 through 55, we have a one speak request from Chuck Henry on items 47 through 53.
I'll just repeat myself, and I'll call licenses, it's, you're just enabling people. I know with Chief Sales over there, they get a lot of calls up at East North and that, that deal with people that are intoxicated, so please deny these licenses, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That'll close the public hearing. Now onto consent public hearing items, 46 through 53, would the council like to remove any of those, or if not, can we have a motion? A motion to approve by Laurenti and second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We take it's on to item 54 under non-consent public hearing items. Second reading, ordinance 6169, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by AE2S for Black Hills Federal Credit Union for rezoning from general agricultural to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at 2700 North Plaza Drive. Okay? Okay, okay with the second, or? Okay, we have a motion from Laurenti, second by Wright, and Jason Solomon will be abstaining from this vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 55, a request by KTM Design Solutions for DKEA LLC for a vacation of section line highway for property generally described as being located west of the current terminus of Poppy Trail. Recommendation from committees to approve with stipulation. Motion by Modric and second by Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. For number 56, the bill list, we'll go to Finance Officer Polly Insomption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at $7,495,721.76.
Motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn by Solomon, second by Laurenti. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.